Okay. You know?
You know, I'm really not this stupid. And I know my wife is Polish, but I'm not this stupid, really. I want to call this meeting to order at 3 o'clock. First order of business could establish an interim quorum, please.
Press D. Beggs.
Here.
Press D. Davis. Press D. Garrett.
President.
Press D. Hinton.
President.
Press D. Nicolau.
President.
Vice President Aguilar is out ill today, my understanding. Board President Richards.
Here, thank you. Quorum established.
Quorum is established.
Say that right. Okay. Do we have any statements of conflict? Anybody with any conflicts tonight? Saying none. Moving on. Any public comments? Anyone here wishing to speak? Okay, we will adjourn to close session at 3:03 and will return for our meeting. What did I forget?
Would you like me to read out the items?
Yes, that would be good. Thank you.
2.1 pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 Discipline Dismissal Release Complaint. Item 2.2 pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 Conference with Labor Negotiators Employee Organizations, CSEA Agency Negotiators Catherine Pritchard, Trevor Stewart. Item 2.3 pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 Conference with Labor Negotiators Employee Organizations, YFA Agency Negotiator Rex Randall Erickson. Item 2.4 pursuant to Government Code 54956.9b1 Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, Name of Case Title IX Complaint, Complaintant I. Item 2.5 pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9d1 Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, Name of Case Title IX Complaint, Complaintant II. And 2.6 pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 Public Employee Performance Title Chancellor, Step II, April Board Meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll adjourn to close session at 3:02.
So here's the handheld, these don't work. And then we'll click here and hit your clicker.
Okay.
And supposedly we can.
This is me right?
Yeah, so we can. Probably get in trouble.
Probably.
Yeah, so Graciela. Mustn't.
I have it on thumb drive if we need it.
Well, supposedly Graciela will pull it.
Okay.
Looks like.
I'll just wait.
We'll just go.
Yeah.
This hole is coming out of there. So when she gets here, when Graciela would do.
Okay, I'd like to call the 709th regular meeting of the Assembly Community College District Board of Trustees meeting to order at 5:30. Really excited to see so many people here. That's really great. Could I ask trustee Davis to do the pledge of allegiance, please? Okay, moving on. Could we please have roll call?
Trustee Beggs. Trustee Davis. Trustee Garrett.
Present.
See Hinton. Trustee Nicolau.
Present.
Board President Richards.
Here, thank you.
For the record, student trustee is positioned as vacant and vice president Aguilar is, will be out today.
Okay, we have no report out of closed session. Moving on to item 3.5, anybody with statement of conflict of interest, looking right or left? Okay, we'll move on. 3.6, change in order of business. I do have one. With, with permission of the board, I'd like to move the fire presentation up right to right after public comments. Everyone okay with that? Very good. Okay. Public comments. Do we have any public comments? Anyone wishing to speak about any issue on the agenda at this time? Please come up. And this is something that's not on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Just put our speaker forms in right there.
Really good.
Does this work? Okay. Hi, my name is Ruby Mason, everyone in the room. I am actually from Columbia College and I'm actually here to address a couple of problems that we're facing in our college. Our teachers, Tom Hofstra and Ty McCarthy, were kicked off of campus in the middle of class on October 5th. And we were told that by December we would get them back. And two weeks before this last semester, we found out that they weren't going to be back. Then we found out in March, we were promised by faculty that they would be back. And they are yet again not back for the summer semester. And we are all incredibly disappointed and we want to know answers. We want to know why our teachers aren't here. We want to know why they've been gone six months at this point and why none of us have had answers or any inclusion as to what's going on. We think this is absurd and taking way too long with no answers. I have stepped up as a student worker at Columbia College. I have been there for just about four years. And in the last six months, I have seen a lot of change in my program. I am part of the Forestry and Natural Resources Program. We're a very hands-on program. We really like to get students out and in the environment where they're going to be working. So we're cranking out students at a two-year rate with the help of Tom Hofstra that are very similar to students that are coming out of four-year colleges when it comes to work experience, knowledge, things like that. Under this, over the last couple of weeks, I've seen, over the last couple of months, I've seen students and staff stressed out at the college. Right now, our numbers might look good in our school and our classes. But truth be told, the community is falling apart as an entirety. We are struggling without our teachers and we're struggling without leadership from those that are supposed to be in charge and above us. Within the last couple of weeks, I've had my personal job threatened from the people that work at my school because I've been trying to voice that the fact that we've got problems in our program. And the fact that those that are supposed to be leading our faculty and those that are supposed to be supporting us are not helping us. and those that are supposed to be supporting us are not helping us whatsoever. And it's been six months since we've felt the support. And if me, as a student worker, is getting threatened, my job is being threatened for future employment at the college, I can't imagine what's going on with the staff that are actually employed. Those that are tenured and those that are adjuncts and those that have been sacrificing so much of their time to our education. So I want to bring to attention the fact that the people at Columbia right now in the forestry program were suffering. The students are suffering, the staff are suffering. And we're not being heard by those that are in charge. Right now, we need support from the board because I've noticed that the faculty at my school are too stressed out to speak up. They are too stressed out because they are afraid of their jobs. So something needs to be done. Between our teachers being gone for seven months now with no explanation as to why and then seeing the people that are supposed to be in charge of our college and in charge of our education and our career fail at their jobs, it's been pretty humiliating. Especially for someone that's trying to advocate for this college that's not from this area. I came from Oregon to go to my college. So seeing how much this last year has gone haywire, it's disappointing. And I really want to bring to your guys' attention that we, as at Columbia, we need help. We need support for our teachers and we need to understand why our teachers aren't there. And we need to understand why the shared governance of our education is not occurring anymore. It seems like it's only, all decisions are being acted upon by one person and everyone else is afraid to speak up as to what's right and what's wrong when it comes to educating students. We've got a great program and we've got a reputation, reputation to uphold. And I don't feel like that's actually happening in my school. Like I said, I'm a student worker and I see my students struggling, I see my teachers struggling and I see my entire community falling apart right now. That's what I'd like to bring to the attention. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, David, is it Michaels?
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm David Michaels. I'm an adjunct at Columbia. Came to work there last spring, twenty twenty-three. I specifically came there to work with Tom Hofstra. Apparently in October, he was asked to leave the campus. Has not been invited back. Like I stated earlier, I came there specifically to work with him. Will not come back and teach if he's not there. I think it's shameful that this issue has not been resolved. I think it's been drug out far too long. I suspect because of billing hours. I would like to see this issue resolved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alan Bustos. Not here. No, there he is. Did I murder your name?
It's okay.
No, that went.
I knew who you were talking about.
Okay.
My name is Alan Bustos. I'm a forestry student at Columbia College. Thanks for your time. When Ross Karke founded the Forestry and Natural Resources Program at Columbia College in the late sixties, he wanted to create a home for students who didn't quite fit into traditional academic environments. It matters that the FNR program exists and it matters that Tom and Ty are the ones to lead it. These last two semesters have been a mess and it is not because these circumstances are new. It's because of the inability of college leadership to recognize the vast knowledge and expertise these professors hold. Laura, one of the past forestry professors, came out of retirement. And Crystal, another professor, who already works full-time outside of teaching, stepped up in huge ways last semester to take on classes that Tom and Ty taught. We owe them for their generosity and we recognize their stubborn commitment to the program, making sure no students fall through the cracks. Some professors were hired to teach classes Tom and Ty taught and the results are telling. Last semester, the college had to let anyone in a forestry and natural resources class drop the class without receiving a W grade on their transcript because so many people were not supported through this change. And yet, there was not one communication from the college about this. To this day, we have not received a single communication from President Lena Tran, CTE Dean Brandon Price, or any other admin explaining why our professors are gone. Without word of mouth, I might still think they were sick or injured, which is what many of us first thought after hearing the news that our classes were canceled. I ran into a classmate a month into the investigation who hadn't been in class for a while. And she asked me, is Ty still our professor? It is frustrating and unprofessional for college leadership, especially President Tran and Dean Price, to make zero efforts at communication, forcing students to take time out of our days to visit admin offices and hope they aren't busy interviewing Tom's replacement. My classmates are high schoolers, young adults, elderly people, parents, grandparents, formerly incarcerated people, military veterans, and all hard workers. All motivated people who care about the planet, our futures, and most importantly, each other. And that extends to our professors who aren't here with us today. A semester of classes not taught is a semester someone could be working, supporting their family, or saving for college. We ask the board for a swift end to the investigation, a hold on hiring new full-time forestry and natural resources professors, and a look into the unprofessionalism and secrecy shown by college admin. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Danielle Maxwell.
Hi, my name's Danielle Maxwell. I've been a student at Columbia College since twenty sixteen. Yeah, that might seem a while, right? Okay, well, I'm not their traditional person. I have a twenty-three-year-old son over there. And I moved up to the mountains because I had something traumatic happen to me. And it was suggested maybe I should go, you know, to college and get out of the house and get back into the rhythm of life. And I'm like, oh, man, I'm in my thirties. I don't want to go back to college, but I took the suggestion. Met up with my counselor, Matt. And he goes, well, what do you want to do? I said, well, I don't know, I'm in my thirties. I've done everything and I still don't know what I want to do. And I have a wide variety of education, background education and hands-on. And I thought there and I pondered, I go, you know, I moved up here because of the mountains and the trees. And this is where I get my happy. My father always told me, if you can make money and be happy, you're, you're in, you know? So I relayed this to my counselor. And he goes, we have this program. It's a forestry program. And I think it's right up your alley. I said, okay, sign me up. And here I am, twenty twenty-four. And I got three classes to round up five certificates and three degrees. During the time, my son has had four brain surgeries. And I was disabled after nine surgeries resulting in ileosomy. I just got back three weeks ago from India after eight, sixteen months stay there. We're fully healed and cured by the grace of God. Now, when I got to Columbia College, it was a safe place. I immediately found my people. Like this gentleman said before, it was a wide variety of people. I got to learn. I have made friends. Some of them are here right now. I started a tree business back in twenty seventeen. It went from ground zero to almost six figures. I employed a lot of people. I have lifetime friends that I've made here. We, this has been not only healing, but an educational thing. And Tom and Crystal and Laura are the meats and potatoes of this program. They have made curriculums that made impressions and have educated people on such a variety and diverse level. Not just EMT, not just culinary. We're talking from timber to forest tech, to weather, to water management, to, you know, a wide variety. And because of what's happened to me medically, I'm not going to be able to go back and climb. So I fortunately have the education that I've gotten directly from Columbia College, directly from Tom and Crystal and this FNO four program. I like to point out that it'd be a great loss and an asset to our community. Bonnie and I, I hate to put you on the spot, but when we first met, we did not get along. Our first introduction was pretty, almost a catfight. Okay? And it, it, things went down and I immediately went to Laura and I'm like, look, I'm going to leave the class. I'm uncomfortable. I don't know what to do. I'm upset, I'm angry. She goes, go ahead and sit down. She went and immediately addressed the issue. And with communication and warning and everything getting out, Bonnie is one of my best friends now. I went to her wedding. She lives far away, she travels a lot to go to community college. And she stayed at my place. So there's a lot of diversity in this program. My son, number one, rule of thumb with him because of his disabilities, he doesn't get the financial aid that a typical person would get. And the rule of thumb with college professors is per.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up. That's.
Okay.
You're over your time limit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, they allowed my son to come in and do college courses.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm asked, and, and I'm.
Thank you.
On the behalf of him.
No, but you're, you're gonna have to finish up.
He's a student.
Doesn't matter, you, you get a time limit. You've had your time, please, please yield the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards. I'm asked this board to have wisdom in their minds and humanity in their hearts and a collective consciousness. And that you remember, if you were in these people's shoes, how would you feel? This needs to be rectified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Nathan Kavanaugh.
So, my whole life, I haven't really had much direction. I was going from one dead-end job to the next. It wasn't until I started taking forestry and natural resource classes that I started to find direction. It was Tom Hofstra and Luke McCarthy have been irreplaceable mentors. And it is because of them that I now know that I can do more in my life. Since they were removed mid-semester, classes have been confusing, ill-structured, and erratic. I feel my education is being threatened and has made me consider dropping out of all my classes. I no longer feel motivated to come to school. Our school leadership, namely Lena Tran and Brandon Price, have not been forthcoming about this situation and have made no attempt at reassuring anyone in the FNR program that the situation, the situation will improve. Emails and phone calls go unanswered. I have no confidence in the people who are supposed to be our leaders and our voice. Are these the people whom I must rely on to fight for my education? Now, Tom Hofstra and Luke McCarthy are the ones who embody these very standards and principles. They are amazing teachers and even better leaders. I believe they are one of the school's greatest resources and we need answers. We need leadership and above all, we need Tom Hofstra and Luke McCarthy back in the classroom where they belong.
Thank you. Mateo Garcia. Would you like me to move to someone else while you get together? Okay, that's fine. You got it? Okay, thank you. No, no problem, glad you're here.
My name is Mateo Garcia and I'm a forestry and natural resources student over at Columbia College. In reflecting on my upbringing in Stockton, California, I must acknowledge the formidable challenges that shaped my journey. Early in adulthood, I found myself at a crossroads, grappling with the allure of negative influences and uncertain futures. However, the Forestry and Natural Resources Program at Columbia College emerged as a transformative force, offering me a lifeline when I needed it most. Under the mentorship and guidance of Director Tom Hofstra and Professor Luke McCarthy, I deepened my passion for environmental stewardship and renewed sense of purpose and direction. Their unwavering encouragement and mentorship were instrumental in steering me away from my negative path and towards a brighter future. Their dedication to their students went beyond the classroom as they provided invaluable support, guidance, and inspiration every step of the way. Yet their absence has left a profound void within the program, impacting not only me but the entire student body and the temporary replacement staff. Their unexplained absence has significantly impacted the success, attendance, and camaraderie of the Forestry and Natural Resources Program. As we convene before this esteemed board, I urge you to recognize the invaluable contributions of Tom Hofstra and Luke McCarthy to the success and vitality of the, of the program. Their legacy of mentorship and dedication lives on in the hearts and minds of their students, serving as a beacon of inspiration for generations to come. While their absence is deeply felt, their impact continues to resonate, reminding us of the transformative power of mentorship and the importance of nourishing future leaders in the field of forestry and natural resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Jones. Mike, Mike Jones.
Thank you guys all for your time, too. Appreciate that. Um, okay, so I wrote a letter as well. If you guys want to read it, you're more than welcome to. I think you're getting the gist based off of like what some of the people just said. Um, and I just want to like kind of share some feelings of like what the experience was like. The Forestry and Natural Resources Program at Columbia is the strangest place I've ever been. It's the first place that I really felt at home. I've always been a bit of an outcast and kind of a wild child and I got to Columbia and I was like, whoa. And I felt like a dog that had been raised around cats his whole life and then I got to go hang out with a bunch of dogs. And like, man, Tom Hofstra like is truly like one of the most incredibly unique people that I've ever met. And I've had the privilege to meet quite a few cool people out there. My understanding with this situation is that this board was not really aware of what was going on on campus for most of the last, has it been six months? Is that like more or less correct? I don't know if you guys are allowed to answer.
Once everyone's done with public comment, I'll make some, some comments.
That makes sense. Um, the way that the situation was handled was truly embarrassing. It was really bad. And this is not my first rodeo. I've been a member of quite a few organizations. And I went to college between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fifteen at University of the Pacific in Stockton. So I know what faculty drama is like. And we got left out in a way that I've really never seen before. Tom is like really important to the school. Forestry and Natural Resources is his program. He built it from the ground up, more or less. Ross Karke was the original. We had another professor, Ty McCarthy, who was beginning to take the reins. Long story short, them leaving the program was catastrophic for most of the students. So a number of students that I know just left the school entirely. This was their first experience in college, they were younger. We got left out to hang pretty much. And it was radio silence. Like, the first day that this happened, people actually thought that Tom and Ty might have died because we got one email that said our professors are no longer teaching. That was it. Our dean was a great guy through all this, but couldn't really talk about it. It was like really heartbreaking to go from being on such a high of like learning all of this stuff, doing these different classes, to all of a sudden having two weeks where we were like in a void, where there was nothing. And they left a bunch of forestry students who are all like intuitive, like we're like go-getters and like people who do really hard stuff for fun. We like to go hike and get lost in the woods and do cool things. And we were just sitting there like trying to figure out what to do and there was nothing to do. So, long story short, I really hope that we can get like some form of correction on this. It would be really nice to have our professors come back, hopefully before summer. I, yeah, I don't know where this all leads, but it would be great. I really appreciate you guys hearing us out, too. It would be really great, like to get just the support that we definitely need. And, I mean, the FNR program is incredible. So I come from the industry, I now work in the field. I can't believe the number of professionals who I've talked to who said Tom Hofstra changed their life. And at the same time, the number of people I've talked to who've said that a two-year degree student from Columbia College has the same, if not more, experience as four-year degree students. Because we run chainsaws, we are out in the woods, we are looking at trees, we're doing, we're not in a classroom necessarily all the time. And that's a good thing because nature's outside. This isn't accounting, thankfully. So, yeah, I really appreciate that. And Ruby Mason and some of the students here have done a tremendous job of like keeping us all together. And so just like super thankful for that.
Thank you very much. Brian McGreevy. Brian McGreevy. By the way, if I mispronounce any of your names, I'm sorry, please correct me.
Hello, board, my name is Brian McGreevy. I am a student at Columbia College, majoring in forestry. I come to you today to express concerns and frustrations that I have, that have been ignored by our. I come to you today to express concerns and frustrations that I have that have been ignored by our dean and school president. As you are aware, two forestry department teachers were suspended mid semester last fall while classes were well underway. I've taken several classes taught by these two teachers, Tom and Ty, and can assure you that they have that they have never been anything less than professional. They're both passionate about forestry and share a love for educating students. Because this is the general consensus amongst students enrolled in our forestry program, their immediate suspensions came as a huge surprise. How could it be that two of our teachers face this kind of reprimand? It just doesn't make sense. In disbelief, many of us contacted Columbia College's administrative leaders, including the dean and school president. After all, we pay for these classes and expect to be to expect a certain standard to be upheld. When you remove teachers mid semester, it seriously affects our quality of education and compromises our ability to focus and learn. Personally, I feel like I was cheated out of a good education last semester. Since classes were well underway, I had adapted to the workflow and style of teaching. When the switch happened, the whole curriculum was uprooted, and I felt confused, distracted and frustrated. The replacement teachers certainly tried their best to make up for the college's shortcomings, but I still feel like I only learned half the material I was supposed to. I believe I'm not the only student who feels this way, and I'm not alone when I say that I want an explanation. Unfortunately, we have not received one from anyone. I'm not sure why. But we are being deliberately ignored. Maybe our school president and dean don't care about our education, and that's why and that's why they have no time to listen to us. For that reason, we come to you today to let you know that we are not happy with the way things have been handled, and hopefully someone here cares about our frustrations and can help us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephen King. Stephen King. Is Stephen King here?
Hi, how are you guys doing? To whom I may concern, I'm writing this statement to put forth the concerns created by the administration at Columbia College. Currently, the only two full-time professors of the Forestry and Natural Resources Programs are on administrative leave and have been for far too long. This ongoing travesty is not only a detriment to our education, but on the institution itself, let alone the negative impact it has had on the campus atmosphere as a whole. Upon my arrival to Columbia, I found a welcoming program that benefited me in ways that I could not have imagined at the time. After a decade since my return from Iraq, I had made a myriad of questionable life choices that had not benefited me in a positive way, to say the least. I found myself back in Flormy County, searching for what many lost veterans describe as a reason for being. During this time, I decided I decided to take a couple of classes at the local community college. Excuse me, I'm not good with emotions.
You're doing fine.
I decided to get a couple of college classes at Columbia, and that's why I not only found a place in life, but a home. The house that Tom built. Thank you. Sorry.
Do you like some water?
No, I'll be good. Thank you. If you speak to anyone in the F and R program at Columbia, you'll consistently hear the word family. This is because this is what Tom made it. He found a way to not only create a program for higher learning, but a place where he could take a broken down veteran like myself and make them feel like there's more to this life and a place for all of us in it. That's what family is. Without Tom and without this program, I might not be here today. Now, due to this questionable at best investigation, we have been deprived of not only the education that we have all paid for and deserve, but a member of our family has been ostracized, and we've been robbed of the time under his tutelage. The travesty of this continued, which worries me because the home that I hold so true and dear is compromised. Drawing on my previous HR experience, I am more than familiar with the process of reprimand, yet to my knowledge, there have been no progressive discipline. If discipline must be progressive, yet those actions have not taken place, then the administration is clearly is clearly moving towards termination, which in that case, immediate termination can only be viewed as retaliation. Which at this point seems likely the issue, since it is well known that Tom had a history of advocating for the F and R program directly against the President Lena Tran, due to her questionable decision making for the F and R. Ultimately, all this ends with reinstatement or a lawsuit, which I would guarantee, and if I would bet on this, that could be very close to a wrong, that this that this district has never actually won any of the lawsuits brought against it, but from former educators. This is what scares me. Not only are we going to suffer the loss of someone so valued, but our program is in jeopardy due to the competence of this administration. I implore this board to step in, make the right decisions. Make make the right decisions. Make the right decisions for the F and R program, Columbia College, Tom, my peers and everyone else involved. I am here as a last act to beg for the justice in a rather unjust world, but a world that I have found the good in, with a place for old veterans like me, a place to talk.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Amelia Henderson.
Hello. My name is Amelia Henderson. As an Columbia College F and R student of two years now, I would like to voice my deep concern and disappointment regarding the college administration's handling of the situation, since our teachers were removed without warning or explanation six months ago. Many concerned students have reached out to administration and some received inadequate or no response at all. When utilizing the CTE deans offered to answer questions, many were simply told that their inquiries could not be answered. Additionally, the president, Lena Tran, has demonstrated her disconnection from our school and community through tone deaf comments made at both the schoolwide and forestry corps graduations in 2023. It also seems that quite the effort has been made to sweep the issues regarding the F and R department under the rug, sparking rumors and leaving many confused and scared. I understand that this is a difficult situation. However, people's academic futures are at stake, and they deserve an explanation. With classes being removed from the schedule with no announcement and no guarantee that necessary courses will be offered for students working toward degrees or transferring, current students are unsure of their futures at Columbia. Many have decided to switch majors or leave their education behind entirely, resulting in a loss of students and income for the school. If we do not have forestry students and a forestry program, the years of hard work that our mentor Tom Hofstra has put in to create such a positive and engaging learning environment will be lost. Moreover, the unique educational experience and deep connections formed between the F and R department and the community have provided a reliable flow of intelligent, experienced workers into our local workforce, including the National Park Service, Forest Service, state parks, et cetera. These are not the only groups affected. When our professors were removed partway through last semester, current teachers and community members were brought in on short notice with little instruction to fill in for them. Among these, Laura McNichol and Crystal Sinclair made difficult sacrifices and spread themselves thin in an effort to continue students' educations. Current, former and prospective students, as well as faculty and community members, have been shocked and distressed at the changes and decisions made regarding this situation, myself included. Tom Hofstra and Ty McCarthy have changed my life and educational experience, just as they have for countless others. I have never enjoyed my classes or felt I learned as much as I did as when I was taking their courses. Never have I felt anything but safe, appreciated, heard and excited to learn when spending time in their classes. My F and R teachers and classmates became my friends and my family. Although I appreciate and thank the teachers who stepped in on short notice to teach classes this semester, the experience is nowhere near the same. As F and R students, as F and R family, we demand accountability and transparency from the college's administration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jody McNear. Jody McNear.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jody, and I've been going to Columbia as a forestry student since 2020. Ever since I was a high school student at Calaveras High, had every intention of entering the forestry program at Columbia College. Now here I am about to graduate with three degrees and multiple certifications because of this program and leadership of Tom and Ty. Because of them, I feel excited and prepared for my future. I cannot leave here today without explaining why leaving this program without the direction and dedication of Tom and Ty would be a disservice to Columbia students for the next generations to come as well. Columbia College, though surrounded by beautiful trees and mountains, is also surrounded by rural communities that are messed with their own struggles with public education. Calified, Calaveras Unified School District just happens to be one of them. For the past few months, I've been able to volunteer every Thursday as a Valley Springs Elementary School garden teacher. I see grades kindergarten through third grade. I get to see these young students, and they are amazed and love the information that I'm able to share with them. It's fun for me and them. And when I'm able to let them know I go to college for this stuff, it's like I light a fire in their eyes. Calaveras Unified continues to foster these programs in forestry, fire and farming throughout K, all the way to seniors, K through 12. A lot of these students are excited for this strong local outlet that is waiting for them at Columbia. This gives hope to many students who otherwise may not have thought that college was an option. This is what happened to me. I've taken classes like maps, fire fuels, dendrology, river navigation, edible medicinal plants and so on. I've picked up countless skills along the way, making me feel secure in the career I've chosen. I do not want the same opportunities that I had denied to students now and in the future. This program is special, like how have you've heard, and a lot will agree. It's special and it is it's our community. Tom and Ty are a huge part in making it feel that way. Because of them, I feel confident in my future due to the knowledge and experience that these teachers and program have provided. This is something that should be available for all students and people who enjoy what Columbia has to offer. Tom and Ty have maximized this program to its full potential. Knowing that I'm able to send young students to the direction of Tom and Ty is comforting, because I know I'm directing them towards the same feeling of hope and excitement about the future I wanted and is now able to have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Oney Porter Katsup. Not even close, was I? Okay. No, it's not. What's the correct pronunciation?
I'm Bonnie Porter Katsiboo. When I started out at school, I was a Bonnie Porter, and then I got married, and Danielle and her son both came to my wedding.
I met you outside. Thank you.
Yes, you did. Just to start out with her, my catfight that day was it was basically over disabled. Basically using the same restroom. We're both disabled, and for the first time, I had somebody else that was disabled when I was up there. Normally, there never was. Later on that day, she saved a student's life. Nobody says anything about it, but we were doing a soils, we were doing a soils class, and we had dug a big old hole, probably about six foot deep down by the river. And as this last boy, as he was digging, he was just getting up and out, and he had an epileptic seizure. And he was going towards the hole headfirst. If he would have gone into that hole, we probably wouldn't have been able to get him out, because he would have been more than a foot deep farther than we could have reached him. Danielle, because of her experience with her son having epileptic seizures, she rushed right over there. She sat right on the edge of that hole, and she grabbed him. She held him and going into that hole. Anybody else would have stood there and watched him go in. She saved his life.
Thank you.
Our first, our first, our first good words to ourselves was as I was walking over to her when she got to go get her stuff was I said, "Good job." And she said, "Thank you." And those are our first words we ever said to each other, besides our other ones. When I started school, I was a little bit younger, but I was 58 years old when I went back to school. I was going to Folsom Lake College. I took a class on what I want to do if I ever grow up. And the thing was, I was supposed to go to a seminar, and the lady from UC Davis didn't show up. It was at Career Center. So I went into, I asked her, so what do the kids of Amador County, I live in El Dorado County and real close to the Amador County line. I live in Fair Play. And I asked, where do the other people go to school? Where does Stanislaw County people go? Where does the Amador County, where are they going? They're not coming to Folsom. She said, "Look it up." So I did. That was on a Thursday. Friday morning, I drove up to Columbia, the Columbia College. I'd never knew it was even there. I go, I got up there, I walked, I got out of my car, and I turned around, and I looked at the lake, and I looked at the buildings. My mom had died about two years before that. I could feel my mom's arms around my shoulders, and I could hear her whispering, "Welcome home." I stood in the parking lot and cried before I went inside. I went in there, talked to a few people, signed up for school right then. I'm a veteran. I don't get any veterans benefits because because I'm a Cold War veteran, and I don't I don't exist and I don't count. Your veterans room, I can thank you for that very much. I did most of my studying in there. It was right there in the rest of the F and R classes. My instructors are right there for me. I'm here today to stand up for Columbia College and its fourth grade natural resources program and its professors. At 56 years old, I discovered Columbia College. I lived two hours away from campus and would commute for my classes. During the summer, I attended as many classes as I could at Baker Station. I was there every Thursday to Sunday except for one. I grew up in a household of teachers, and my father was a naturalist, teaching me about the flora and fauna around me. I was hard headed and didn't learn very much. Columbia College and its professors woke up a part of me I had lost. I also finally understood my father. Columbia College saved my life. Dr. Thomas Hofstra, did I just kill it?
Good.
Thomas Hofstra has committed himself and oh, wait. Oh, has committed himself for normal hours and away from normal hours. During my time at Columbia, I have been a part of making the campus fire safe, even while my own house was in danger of being burned. The students today, I can feel their loss. While applying for jobs, I do not have the backing of my professors I am needing. Mr. Dr. Hofstra, as a reference for a new biomass, I was, I wanted to apply for a job, a new biomass plant was being put in where the Caldoire fire was, but I don't have Dr. Hofstra for his input and his help.
I'll get you to wrap up, please. You got maybe another few sentences.
So I hope you think of the students and the futures. I know when I heard they weren't there, I felt lost and I really needed Columbia College. It was a major part of my life, and it always is. And I have my 2019 and 2020, and I was kind of left out without my graduation due to COVID.
Thank you very much. Elsie Kosar. Elsie Kosar.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelsey McKeon Kossel, and I am an F and R student and the daughter of a decades-long tenured community college professor. I also hold several degrees myself, so I am particularly well versed in the world of academia. In all of my years witnessing the bureaucracy of the California Community College system, I have never seen a situation so poorly managed. The lack of transparency and efficiency is shocking. This process has dragged on for more than six months with no explanation nor clear vision of a path forward from administration officials. I understand due process and all of the concerns therein, but I also understand that good communication can provide information without jeopardizing anyone. One can only assume, especially without open dialogue, that this is being deliberately dragged out for reasons only administration officials and perhaps this board knows. I can promise you that a lack of information leads to speculation and a loss of credibility to both this board and the community college administrators. Dr. Hofstra is an immensely gifted teacher who cares for his students, both while attending the college and after graduation as they pursue their careers. I came to Columbia College a year ago to take just one class to augment my knowledge of California wildlife, my family's homeschooling journey and our community youth group. After experiencing Tom's profoundly inspired pedagogy and his devotion to our community, I was drawn to pursue a second associate's degree in natural resources. The passion Tom brings for this beautiful place we call home is fantastically contagious. This is a community that needs a strong forestry and natural resources program under the strong leadership of Dr. Hofstra. Local, private, state and federal agencies are all pouring millions of dollars into fuel reduction work on the forest lands in Topeka County. fuel reduction work on the forest lands in Topeka County. Biomass facilities are working round the clock to establish tow holds in this community and the need from industry for foresters, truck drivers, heavy equipment operators, NEPA planners, firefighters, botanists, and other professionals is overwhelming. Tom has his, his finger on the pulse of this and is directly developing the workforce this community needs. To continue to deny his students the guidance they have come to expect from him is unconscionable and to deny what he brings to our community at large is incredibly short-sighted. Again, this is a community that needs a strong forestry and natural resources program under the strong leadership of Dr. Hofstra. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Crystal Pombo and I am a Columbia College alumna, having graduated from the program in 2019 and 2020 respectively. I came to the FNR program in 2015 after my life had completely fallen apart due to addiction and I found myself in a desperate struggle to put it back together. Although I was heavily involved in the Narcotics Anonymous program, I had found my life to be somehow incomplete. I had not used drugs for almost four years at this point, but I felt I wanted more out of life than what NA was able to provide. By complete chance, I enrolled for classes at Columbia, originally intending to do the nursing program, but another path would open up for me and I am eternally grateful that it did. Another random change, of course, albeit at the recommendation of a fellow female FNR member, and I found myself in the Forestry and Natural Resources program. I was a completely different person then, not the confident woman you see today. My self-confidence was shattered from years of living a life of addiction and I almost gave up many times before I even got started, terrified of not being good enough, smart enough, and of course, not to mention too old. What I found when I got to FNR changed my life forever. I found encouragement and support. I found acceptance in a place where I was able to learn because it was safe. It was safe to ask questions, it was safe to be unsure, and it was safe to be outspoken and maybe even a little too loud. As a woman, I received a level of support from Tom and all of the instructors that has cultivated my ability for my confidence to grow and excel, not just in my professional life, but in my personal life as well. As a direct result of the influence Tom has had on my life, I have a career that I love and am proud of, working to keep my community safe from the effects of wildfire. The quality of education I received at Columbia from Tom allows me to be an invaluable member of my organization. I use the knowledge specifically gained from my time learning with Tom every single day many times. I cannot thank him enough for his influence on my life, so I will begin by standing here today. I no longer worry about my future or doubt where I belong. On February 6, 2024, I celebrated 13 years free of opiates and methamphetamine. I honestly cannot say that I would have made it this far without the FNR program and Tom. What I worry about now are future students like me. People who are lost, unsure, maybe a little different. Where is their opportunity to succeed? What does their future look like? As students, former, current, and future, we have a right to make an informed decision about our education. We have a right to transparency. Many of us came here on the recommendation of another student because of Tom. Many of us, including myself, are interested in the potential four-year program, but just as many of us, including myself, are inclined to enroll elsewhere without Tom. This is a two-year college, nearly half of the time, this is a two-year college and we are now heading into three semesters of absolute chaos for the FNR students, nearly half of the time they will be spending here. While the new instructors are no doubt doing the best they can, the students deserve consistency in instruction and education. The lack of timeliness and professionalism in this situation is reducing the quality of education Columbia can provide and is known for because of Tom and has affected the reputation of the school administration. As a direct result of Lena transactions, you are losing the trust of your students and your ability to handle the situation appropriately and fairly, as well as placing unreasonable responsibility levels on other teaching staff. I ask that you take this statement into consideration regarding the situation with Tom and that it may offer you some insight into how valuable his teaching is to our community.
Thank you. Autumn, and I can't read your last name, Autumn A. Autumn A? I can't read your last. That's not a problem.
I'm Autumn, I'm a student at Columbia. Thanks for having me. Gonna be short and personal. In 2023, I survived a car accident that broke my body, ended my career, and forever changed my life. I moved across the country, back home with my parents, seeking peace and the space to heal. My entire vision, plans, goals, and nearly attained dreams smashed in a heap on the side of a backcountry road drowned in the murky depths of a Floridian swamp. Recovery was excruciating and long, and when my body healed, I found my spirit broken, a future so uncertain that it burned into my innermost self. Unemployed, aimless, unmotivated, and uninspired. Who am I? Where am I going? And how do I get there happily? It didn't take long for me to see it. Just a deep breath at the top of Lassen Peak, above a vast and dynamic planet, wet feet in a river canyon lush with ferns and fluorescent. Tall, great, and gentle, sweet like maple, the smell of a stand of Jeffries. Memories forged together etched forever in our hearts. This is our legacy and for that, I assume we all give our gratitude to Tom Hofstra. He is the heart and we need him back. We are FNR, a force dedicated to the nurturing and protection of this earth that has only ever done the same for every one of us. What makes this program special is those classes that get us out in the field, seeing the world, touching it, smelling it, and truly understanding it. That is how you find your place. That is what has saved me like so many others. Experiences that have opened our eyes to beauty and resilience of the natural world, grounding us in a sense of purpose and belonging that we thought was lost forever. Through the FNR program, I've discovered not only a passion for conservation, but also a renewed sense of self. Protect this legacy and be a part of it by bringing back Tom and Ty, our mentors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak that hasn't filled out a comment card? Does anyone else that hasn't filled out a comment card want to speak? Okay. Please state your name.
My name is Weston Stulak. So the removal of these teachers has taken the heart of the program and it will die without them. You can find suitable people, but it'll take a long time to build up the reputation that they have and the connections they have. The enrollment will drop. I know it's one of the highest enrollments. FNR program has a ton of people and the recruiting of students is huge, you know, and I, I've told many people about the program. I no longer will recommend it without Tom there or without Ty as well, but Tom is truly the heart of that program. I am at the end of my natural resources degree and I will, I'm going to leave to go to Humboldt. You know, I would love to see the four-year program, but without Tom, I'm not interested. Um, also, there is more, um, evidence and statements that we have from many FNR students in binders for all of you guys.
Please feel free to submit those. Anyone else that hasn't, uh? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment. Generally, uh, we're not allowed to comment on things that aren't on the agenda, nor should we respond to public comment, but I feel with this outpouring, first, I want to thank you all for coming. Um, many of you, we heard from you up at Columbia. I did misspeak at, misspoke, misspeak, whatever it is. I, I, I said the wrong thing up at Columbia College and I basically said that I had just heard about that day and that wasn't true. We were, we've been aware of this problem for some time. Um, I received a, a letter that day and an email and I immediately checked into it. Unfortunately, this is a very litigious state and California HR policy and, and California policy takes time and there's specific procedures. All I can tell you is that, that this is a fair process. We've hired professional investigators and we're doing everything we can to get to the bottom of this matter. There's been no decisions. I'm sorry you've been inconvenienced, but these things take time. So with that, I'll close public. Do I have comments from trustees?
I would just like to commend everyone who spoke today for being bold and courageous. Um, that takes a lot of guts. Your stories, I hear you and I see you and I just want to really commend you for sharing. And I know it's also a trek down to Modesto, so personally, I just want to say thank you for being here, thank you for sharing.
Any other trustee you wish to comment? Trustee Hinton?
I did say it, but I'd like to thank those that are veterans for, um, coming out and speaking because I know your life went through a lot of turmoil. My brother was in, um, Iraq, so for you coming and sharing what this meant to you, it meant a lot to me.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to 3.8. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the minutes. So moved by trustee Beggs?
Second.
Second by trustee Nicolau? Hinton, what did I say? I thought, I thought it was you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, I'm now going to ask the fire people to come up and make a presentation.
All right, well, the presentation is, uh, being loaded up. Um, I just want to say good evening. It's nice to see everyone. Chancellor Young, President Sanders, members of the board. Um, this is a great opportunity to, uh, speak. My name is Chris Jelinek. I'm a deputy fire chief with the fire department. I'm also your director for our regional fire training programs, fire and emergency medical services. Uh, it's my pleasure to speak and, um, uh, I'm appreciative of this opportunity. I know you have a full agenda and I do promise to, to be brief for, uh, tonight's presentation. So, um, again, how we doing on load?
Chris, tell us your background. How cool are you?
Not very. I'm pretty boring. Um, this is, uh, much closer to the, the end of my career than the beginning. I started back in 1992, working on the North Coast. And, um, in attendance with me tonight is my lovely wife, Kim. And, uh, as you can see, we travel in packs, we don't come light with the fire service. So, uh, thank you to, uh, all of my colleagues for being here tonight, it's appreciated.
Did you bring food or no?
We should, we should, we definitely should have. Um, this is, uh, my last month, my last, uh, hurrah in, in the fire service and, uh, I'm, I'm grateful for all of it. I've had an incredible career and my time here, uh, that's been spent at, uh, at MJC, returning to education is, has been absolutely one of, one of the highlights of, of my career. I've thoroughly enjoyed it, I, I greatly appreciate it and, um, it's, it's been an absolute joy to, to do this. So if you're not able to load it, I can, I can just roll with it. I can, I can make this work. You do, you have my deck in front of you, so I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, I've, I've got copies of my notes here, I'm all set. Are we good? Oh, it's no problem.
Never a doubt.
All right, well, let's, let's begin. So, um, I just wanted to give you a brief update, um, on, uh, where we came from, uh, what we've accomplished so far and, and where we're going. So, uh, this relationship, this, this collaboration, I think, has been, uh, a tremendous success and, and collaboration in any form is really designed to, uh, bring the best that all of your partners are bringing to the table. Um, and I absolutely feel that, that we've done that. The sum is truly greater than the individual parts, um, truly a force multiplier. And we're bringing our, our unique experiences and resources and perspectives and, and we're trying to make the whole system better and it's been, it's, it's been success so far. So just a quick, couple of quick highlights, um, of, uh, some, some accomplishments and I'll give you, I'll give you a little more detail, but, um, we're achieving cost savings for the management of these fire and EMS programs through the presence of a chief officer. Also in attendance is, uh, is fire captain Curless, who's managing our fire technology programs and he's been assigned to work at the RFTC, uh, not at a part-time basis, but, but, but full-time and he's been a, a tremendous resource and asset in our programs. Well, we're looking to continue to develop and refine pathways to find members of the public safety community, both students and those in vocation to efficiently attain college credits and associate degrees. We're looking to expand our course offerings in alignment with state fire training curriculum and other critical needs within our community. And, uh, last but not least, we're looking to expand the physical footprint of our training assets, but do so in a fiscally responsible way. So the last time we spoke, we had set this goal and I feel that it's bold intentionally. Um, and our goal is to become California's premier fire and EMS vocational training program. And we mean every word of that. And so what does that mean? What does, what does that look like? What does that success mean for our programs here? Well, number one, we want to continue to lean into, uh, best practices and innovation and I think this partnership is a great example of innovation. We have the attention of state fire training. They have commented, they feel that this model is one that should be looked at very closely by other colleges and, uh, fire departments as, as a future model within the state of California. So it's, it's, uh, we, we think we're on to something here. We want to continue to recruit and retain and develop and refine expert instructors within our field. We want to make sure that we have state-of-the-art facilities, props, uh, tools and equipment to make sure that we can, uh, teach to industry standards and what's being used in the field right now. We want to make sure that our course deliveries are in alignment with our community needs and those of, of, again, of people working in vocation and aspire to, to work within our field. And it's through these efforts that we think that, um, we're gonna be able not just to maintain, but to improve our strong reputation of our programs within, within the community. So let's talk about where we came from and, uh, and where we want to go. So our first steps, when we, uh, walked into the program, we had a, we had a few challenges. Uh, we took our own tactical pause with, uh, program accreditation, but I'm pleased to advise that our program is fully accredited by state fire training, um, and that students in this academy and moving forward will be able to proudly display, um, and, and speak of, of receiving a, um, a, a degree from a credentialed, uh, program here, here in the city of Modesto. Um, we also took a look at our apparatus fleet, which was in, uh, a pretty tough state. Uh, fire engines can be quite expensive, uh, and today's dollars, they're about a million bucks a piece and the build-out time is between 36 and 48 months if we were to order one today. The city of Modesto, um, is facing that in, in real time with reach and purchases. So through our relationship, we were able to, um, uh, put modern fire service into place, into use immediately and that, and that model has been very successful. We're also, um, nearly complete with purchasing and the replacement of equipment and things within the system, um, that, that just, just needed to go. And quite frankly, some of it was, um, was in a pretty significant state of disrepair. Um, but we have the financial resources and we've been able to replace all the equipment. Uh, supply chain is the only thing that's slowing us down right now, but it's, it's coming. Um, we have validated that the appropriate maintenance agreements are in place for equipment and we're working on ensuring that critical policies and procedures for our program are also in place. So that's where we came from and what we did to stabilize here is where we're going. Um, we're looking to meet our community needs, um, and align those with the offerings from, from the college. And one of the biggest is our community has a huge unmet need to train paramedics. It's a, it's a, it's a critical need. Now, the good news is, is that, uh, my predecessor put in work to ensure that the curriculum for a paramedic program, uh, was, was taken care of. And so, so that piece is, is handled. We have our own unique accreditation process to go through to stand up a paramedic program. Uh, we anticipate that this will take about 18 months, but we have the financial assets and we're working on putting the appropriate people in place to, to, to get that program up and running. We also went- We also intend to expand our course offerings in alignment with state fire training curriculum and our regional needs. And it's across a wide variety of different topics from fire officer and chief officer development, hazardous materials, urban search and rescue, fire prevention and fire fire investigation, just to just to name a few. And we're also expanding our physical footprint in two separate ways with the support of multiple partners, including our college. We are setting up a new fire training tower at MST, Modesto Stanislaus Consolidated Turlock Station 17, which our students at the college have full access to in perpetuity of that of that project. So it's a terrific partnership. And and I think it's a great use of fiscal resources. The next big project is has to rehab a classroom that's within the footprint of the RFTC so that we have someplace to put all these all these students that we hope to bring into our programs. We're also looking to align education with vocation. We're doing that through alignment of our fire academies between the college and MST. And I've learned a lot about different ways that we can leverage and utilize existing systems within the college. The instructional services agreement is getting kicked off this summer, starting in in May. We're very excited about that. We hope to increase the utilization of credit for prior learning and use that as an efficient way for our firefighters to attain college credits for work that they've either done or that is already embedded into a curriculum that's coming out coming out of the state. And last but not least, we have some work in front of us to redesign our curriculum to permit transferability to to four-year universities. So through the accreditation process in our own internal assessment, we did notice that we have a few things that we need to work on. And one of the more significant, more important projects is to lean into our efforts on on inclusion, notably trying to bring more women into the fire service. Our EMS programs are doing well. It's about a 50-50 split of men and women. But within fire, we struggled. And even even the best-positioned programs or fire departments are struggling to attain greater than 10% of their employees as as women. So we have some innovative ideas that we're gonna we're gonna try to see if we can drive a stake and have some success. The first is what we're calling our female athlete fitness program, where we're taking college athletes or high school athletes, bringing them to the RFTC and showing them our programs, allowing them to work out and exposing them to our our programs, just to give them a taste test, to see what it's like, see if this is something they're interested in learning more about. We're in the planning phases for a young women's empowerment camp where we'll bring high school-age young ladies to the RFTC. And the program will be hosted and facilitated by female firefighters from quite literally from all over the state, where they will have an opportunity to pull hose and climb ladders and do all the other things that we do in real time. So we're really excited about that. And we're also looking to update our website videos and our handouts to reflect an inclusive environment within the college. And so last but not least, we want to be able to celebrate our success, brand and market our programs appropriately, leverage this great relationship that we have, and celebrate it and use it as a recruitment tool for our programs. And so we're going to continue working on marketing of our programs, working with our local community, with the high schools, reaching out to other groups throughout the YCCD system and and just, again, trying to celebrate who we are. So I promised to be brief, and hopefully that was that was good, but I will entertain questions at this time. So thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the public? Any board questions?
Is parking going to hold you back?
That's a great question. And it is a significant limiter there, as is a classroom available space. I refuse to use it as an excuse not to expand. And so I view it as a solvable problem. We may have to get creative with how we do that. President Sanders and I have explored a number of different options, and they're all expensive. It's a very challenging situation to work through. So in an ideal environment, we would have another 100 parking spaces. But I'm not going to have that slow us down for expansion of our of our programs.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one. I think it's great. I'm just really excited about this. I'm excited about the paramedic program. Will something like that be sharing some of the equipment with our nursing facilities or what? Because I know those patients are great. They're really expensive. So I just wondered what the plan is.
It's a it's a great question, and I do think there is there is a lot of potential for that. And by and by coincidence, as we were looking for equipment and making improvements within our program, we discovered that that our ENT and paramedic programs, as well as the fire department, as well as the nursing program, we're all looking at the exact same model of simulators for for our own unique programs. And so I absolutely think there is potential for us to pollinate between the two programs and share and be and be efficient in that way.
Right. Don't forget respiratory therapy, too.
Any other questions? I want to take a moment for personal privilege. So about two years ago, I was made aware that we had some real challenges with our fire academy. Enrollment was down. We had financial problems. And probably most importantly, we had no relationship with the city of Modesto, which happens to have become the premier fire department in in the county, and it's really become a regional effort. I brought this to the attention of Chancellor Young, and he immediately met with, at that time, it was the interim president Chad Wedwing and Lena Tran, and then it was Vice President Sanders. They looked at this situation and they realized that a change had to be made. Well, many of you know, my wife happens to be the mayor of Turlock, and the reason I mention this is Chris was the Turlock Fire Chief. So I had gotten to know him, and I knew his background in in running academies. Well, we happened to, and that night when I got the word that we were going to rekindle our relationship with Modesto, we happened to attend the mayor of Series, State of the City. And I just mentioned to Chris that this was going to open. He said, I want that job. And I said, oh, did you just say that in front of the mayor of Turlock? That she didn't want to be the mayor of Turlock's fire chief? Well, anyway, Chris has taken a lot of grief from my wife because we sold her fire chief. But she's ready to forgive you because what you've done is amazing. You've turned enrollment around completely. You've helped us spend to a $2 million grant. You mentioned you've got us new fire trucks. The relationship with Modesto is perfect. And the only sad thing is that you've decided with your lovely wife, and I've asked I'd asked her to come up now. You're moving to Italy. But I know the fire department's in good hands, and I'd ask you to bring up your team because we have a plaque for you. Okay, at this time, the chancellor has a presentation to make.
Thank you. Dr. Richards, I am pleased to provide an update on the district strategic plan. And let me call Dr. Scott Siegel to come forward with his team to make the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Young and trustees. We're going to make this really fast. I'm here with Deborah Hendricks, who is my partner in this effort. And we've been facilitating a rewrite of your strategic plan. It's actually expired at this point. I do want to mention that we're the people who do most of the work are the district council. And they're doing a fantastic job. We're just going to report on the progress that they've made. So to this point, the council has approved four strategic goals. Those are provided to you on a handout. It looks like this, if you can see it, you should have that. As part of the process, we also asked groups of community members, one from Modesto and one from the Sonora area, to provide feedback on the four strategic goals. And you also have a handout with their input provided. It's a document that looks like this has a lot of input. I encourage you to read through that. Probably take a little while. The council then drafted objectives following that for each goal that are also in the handout with the with the goals. And the input from the community was taken into account, and in some cases changed how the district council members were thinking as they they worked on that when they were drafting those. So I'm going to Deborah?
Good evening. I'd like to count call up Mary Ann Cannon, who is the president and CEO of Stanislaus Foundation, and Joe Duran, who is executive director of Stanislaus Equity Partners.
Welcome.
And we're really grateful that they're here. They are two of the members that joined us in the community focus, and I'd like them to speak briefly on that experience.
Thank you. Last time I was here, if you recall, it was memorable, was January 2023, and I was joined by a number of community members that expressed their concern about the turmoil in leadership and the fractured, what we felt, relationship between YCCD and MJC, and in turn, between MJC and YCCD and the community at large. I'm really pleased to come back to all of you and and sort of note that in this plan, you've heard from community members that say, in addition to student outcomes, in addition to rectifying equity gaps, in addition to organizational stability, that the goal that's right there with those three is the community partnerships, greater transparency, greater accountability, greater reporting. And that sort of is echoing back to what you heard back in January 2023. So it's good now that it has sort of come forth in the form of this strategic plan. I really encourage you to not just obviously review these. I know you'll do a good job of that, but take them to heart. What does it mean to be accountable to this community? Because what we said back then, if you recall, is you know, you don't work for the faculty. You don't work for yourselves or the chancellor. You work for the students, a lot of whom you've heard from today, and I'm sure you hear from all the time. And you in turn work for the community and its employers. And you're the workforce engine for our our county. And so Antualme County, Calveras County. So the idea of partnerships and the objectives you see laid forth, I can't underscore the importance of them enough. And I can't underscore how much this community and myself, as an MJC alum, love this institution. We love it just as much as all of you. And we're here to be in partnership with all of you. So please know that when we comment, when we hold you accountable, when you when you sort of perceive us as as being maybe negative or critical, it comes from a place of love. We want to improve this institution just as much as you do, all of your community partners and employers do. Just this morning, I met with a significant donor at the Community Foundation, and they approved with our recommendation funding for your art students to provide after-school programming to local elementary schools through MJC. Yeah, so it's really cool. We're looking at funding a number of your programs from our foundation. So again, we're here to really sort of underscore the importance of the community partnership piece of this strategic plan. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you all doing? I'm just going to be real brief in regard to my comments. I want to echo everything that Mary Ann had to say, absolutely. But I want to kind of just back backtrack a little bit to Dr. Richards, when you had this group that was up here, that was phenomenal. There was a snapshot in my mind of partnerships, collaboration. You know, I've been in this community now. I'm going to give my age, 63 years. I've had two daughters that have graduated from MJC. I love this community. And echoing what Mary Ann said, it's out of out of love for this community, out of love for this college, that we sometimes echo some of the things we do. But there's a moment in time that I've seen this time in my lifetime, there just seems to be an opportunity that seems to be presenting itself of being able to collaborate and partner and to listen to each other and to work together because of the systemic issues, as we know, that we have in our community are too large for any one of us to take on. There is no way in having the Modesto Junior College move forward. I'm excited about that, being able to hear from the community. We're just all, you know, very, very excited about that. So thank you for for considering that.
So the next steps in the process is we will take these draft objectives back to the council on April 24. They then will go out to the representation of Senate and associations. Then we will circle back with the council again in September, October. Our plan is to have to you your draft strategic plan, October, November of 20 of this year. So thank you very much.
Any questions from the public? Questions from trustees? Thank you very much. And now we'll try to get back in order. I won't drive Graciela too crazy. Board committee reports. Trustee Garrett, Finance Committee?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Policy Committee, trustee Hinton?
I'll get into it later when Kimberly shares. So nothing this week, this month.
Thank you. Columbia College Foundation, trustee Davis?
We got a meeting on March 19 at Columbia. And the foundation had a revise and adoption of new bylaws, or not new, but but revised bylaws. But also at that meeting, a counselor came and shared information that I thought the board might be interested in hearing. That students that receive the CC, the Columbia Foundation Promise Scholarship have a, over the last six years, a persistent rate that averages 80.3% as compared to non-promised students at 65 and a half percent. Now, that's it's it's data. There may be more under underneath that, you know, correlation doesn't mean causation necessarily, but it was it was something to be proud of and that you would like to hear that. That concludes that report. Next is
You're next.
Okay, so the Associated Stanislaus County School Board, just a reminder to the trustees that the annual school board dinner is April 24. If you're planning to attend, let Graciela know. Also, I sent had Graciela send out the flyer on Brown Act training that's that the association provides. Thank you.
Trustee, you have some.
You forgot the other founder.
Oh, I jumped over you. I gotta do it at least once. Trustee bags?
Okay, so our meeting was yesterday of the MJC Foundation. And next week, on April 17, the MJC Foundation is pleased to be awarding a total of around $350,000 to 280 students in the annual scholarship ceremony. So we're really excited about that. And the foundation director, Emily Lawrence, is also working with Dean Patrick Betancourt and our new grant writer, Tamiya Ewing. I'm building a grant-making profile to support MJC's schools and programs. So that's another thing to be excited about. Thank you.
Okay, next, Valley Insurance Program, Joint Powers Agency Board Report, trustee Hinton, anything?
We have a conference, the the yearly conference this coming week on the 17th. So next month, I'll have a report on how that went.
Okay, now we'll move along to a presentation by MJC Student Services. Vice President Andrea?
Good evening. Graciela passed out to you all a folder that has all of our program brochures. Nonetheless, it has our our fall 2020 2023 data for you. But I will be presenting tonight in addition to my deans, and each will have a couple of students who will be speaking as well. For the Division of Student Services, I'll talk to you just briefly regarding our leadership and the organization, our services and programs for students, as well as our student services goals. In the Division of Student Services, there are 160 employees who are led by 16 managers. And our communication flow, I have a meeting with my dean with the dean team weekly of meetings. And our communication flow, I have a meeting with my dean with the dean team weekly, a meeting with leadership managers bi monthly, and then we have a division wide meeting monthly via Zoom as well. So we want to make sure that information is flowing throughout our division. Our services and programs for students, you'll hear more about these from a couple of our deans. But everything that has starred are new programs that came into existence in the last two years. And what I want to highlight is the after school pilot program, which is in the bottom right hand corner. We have met with the Boys and Girls Club of Stanislaus County and the Modesto City Schools, looked at the space, and MOU should be coming soon to implement an after school program. One of the directives from you when you saw our climate survey was the need for childcare. And this is specifically an after school program for school aged children. We're modeling it after the Long Beach Community College and Long Beach Unified School District. So we'll be piloting that probably before the before the beginning of the fall, if not summer. Our goals of student services, number one is to increase recruitment, retention and completion rates. Everything that we do goes back to that very first check checkpoint. Also to increase student engagement engagement and a sense of belonging. You'll hear about all the programs that are doing just that. And it's also to improve the onboarding process, our community outreach and external partnerships. You're here about that tonight. Also to improve customer service by removing so many barriers that have existed in the past to show you how those have been removed. And also transparency and communication throughout the division. And that's why I shared with you earlier about how information is disseminated disseminated throughout the division. At this time, I'm gonna bring up Angelica Guzman, our Dean of Enrollment Services.
I've been hearing a lot of good things from the Pittman High School principal about you. So keep up the good work.
You.
Used to play volleyball for us at Stanislaus.
Great. Good evening, members of the board, Chancellor Young. Like Andrea mentioned, my name's Angelica Guzman. I'm the Dean of Enrollment Services. And so tonight I am here to talk about the areas that I support. I oversee admissions, financial aid and outreach and community partnerships, along with the directors in those areas. As a team, we're focusing on customer experience, enhanced services and new technology. For customer service, we are working on increasing the number of financial aid workshops we host in the community. For the twenty two twenty three FAFSA year, we served about a thousand students. In the current FAFSA year for twenty three twenty four, we've been able to grow that to close to two thousand students as of March, and we are still continuing to serve students for that year. With C cap and dual enrollment, wrapping up this current academic year, we've been able to offer courses at ten high schools representing about ninety sections, really serving about twenty five hundred students. For the twenty four twenty year that we are about to begin later this calendar year, we are growing to serving over twenty high schools, representing about two hundred requested sections with the potential to serve up to five thousand students. Continuing with our customer service, we have been offering what we're calling MJC Experience Days. It's an onboarding day by high school. Essentially, we provide support with enrollment process, a college experience. In twenty three, in twenty twenty three, we supported fourteen high schools, brought them to campus, oftentimes provided transportation, serving close to a thousand students. In twenty twenty four, just wrapping up this cycle that's preparing for the fall semester, we serve twenty two high schools, serving almost two thousand students. Our counselors and students have described this event as meaningful. The students feel like a real college student, and they're excited about starting college. Again, with our recruitment, we are rethinking how we're onboarding students. We are going to be opening a welcome center and creating a student ambassador program. The goal is to create a central location where new and future students can come and receive peer to peer support, moving through the application, financial aid and registration, and more to come about a grand opening in the near future. Moving on to enhanced services and admissions and records, we have continued to create new additional forms online via eTrev. This has reduced processing time for students, increased staff productivity, and really just creating a better experience because the forms are accessible, mobile friendly, and really students can submit forms at any time in the at any time in the day. With the streamlining of our California College Promise AB nineteen or two year free program, we've been able to eliminate the application to apply for that grant. Previously, students had to self identify. Now they no longer self identify. We are automatically awarding students that meet eligibility. And for the twenty two twenty three year, we had close to five hundred students that were eligible for that grant. In this current year that we're wrapping up for twenty three twenty four, we've been able to double that to almost a thousand students. So we expect that to grow in the future. Along with more enhanced services is a new C cap webpage. We've been able to create one central location where we provide enrollment information by high school. And so this is a public facing page that provides transparency. We're able to use this with students, parents, counselors at the high school. The sections that are listed here show date, time, location. They also link directly to our registration platform, which improves that student's experience with registering for the courses that they're taking at their high school. Moving on to new technology, this month we are launching with the California Virtual College, which is an online initiative supported by the state chancellor's office. With CBC, students across California community colleges can enroll online instantly in online MJC classes. This eliminates that application. It makes the process easier. And this will aid hopefully in enrollment and student degree completion, finding access to those courses. Just last month, we've launched an interactive map of MJC's east and west campus. The map is interactive, meaning that it's dynamic. Students can explore services and programs, which is superior over having a PDF map, although we still have those physical ones available for students. Ultimately, with the online tour and interactive map, it's mobile friendly. Students can access it at any time. People in the community can access it at any time, putting MJC at their fingertips. And then lastly, with new technology, we have transitioned from our old Pirate's Net platform that's on the left to our new MyMJC student portal. The student MyMJC student portal really elevates the student's experience by providing access to information, resources and one centralized hub that's customizable for students and faculty. Thank you.
All right, good evening. How are you guys doing today? Good, good. So my name is Jose, I'm the dean of special programs. I am going to highlight a couple of things. We have a couple of students here. They're going to just talk about their experience. I want to put the focus on them a little bit more, so we can have enough time. So here are just some of the areas we're going to talk about. We're talking about growth, the programs, and basically some examples to the successes as well. So special programs, we've actually grown. So traditionally, we had programs like EOPS, Trio, Veterans, Emotion, so on and so forth. But in the past couple of years, we've actually almost doubled our our programs here and finding a space for our students in the space to belong in the space of so they could say, you know what, this is my area. And when they come back, once they graduate, they could say, you know, I had this excellent experience. And so this is the the piece that we want to actually focus on. And part of that is also within partnerships with the different areas as well. So for example, the camp program, which I'll talk about a little bit in in a little bit. Our admin program is one of our newest programs, actually started the spring of this year, and it's targeted for African American male students. This is also in connection to the collaborative, which is our male initiatives to support our students in order to create workshops and space. And for them to have a an area just to kind of not only for themselves, but also to connect with admin faculty and and other students as well and staff. And so part of that is creating a professional development environment and supporting them as they move along through the college. Couple of few other new programs that we had also, our Native American program to support Native American students to go from a trajectory from K through twelve onto transferring. So for example, this Friday, we're actually going to meet with UC Merced and to talk about what can we do, kind of support. They have a Native American admissions person. So how can we create those partnerships, those 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 pathways, those bridges? Camp is for our migrant students and that's a partnership. Next year, a group came to us to campus and said, hey, we want to partner with our migrant students, saying, how can we support that? So they're creating that space. Next up is our Foster U students. And we're that's part of the EOPS umbrella. And there we're actually doing some work with the Stanislaus, excuse me, Stan State, where we're housing some students there. We have about five rooms as a pilot program to see, okay, you're getting ready to transfer. Here's an opportunity. Here's a place. You need a place to stay. Let's use those opportunities to kind of build those those areas. And then Puente as well, which has started this year. And it's a an example of student services and instruction coming together and supporting a place. That's a transfer based program. And so yesterday, they actually went to UC Berkeley to go see the campus as well. And so a lot of this was a first time for students to kind of being exposed to these areas and these things. Our basic needs piece, which we talked about before, but just do want to highlight that a couple of weeks ago, with actual Modesto B did an article on the program itself. So Jonathan Adios, I think, is somewhere in here. Mentioned it was featured in the article itself and kind of just talked about the amazing things they do. From anything from handing out food to the vouchers to the CalFresh program, which is the long trajectory type of support for students itself, so addressing some of the the needs. Want to talk about the Trio program, Oscar coming up. Trio is a federal program intended for our first generation low income students. They actually, the pre college program goes out to the different high schools and middle schools in the area. They do support not only admissions and also financial aid. They get students that are actually have been applying and admitted to the CSU's UC's community colleges, private schools, and actually do want to announce that a just a couple of weeks ago, found out that a student actually got accepted to Harvard. And so looking at those those places, right, we have students kind of Stanford and so on and so forth. But Oscar, who was actually a eleventh grader at Patterson High School, just wanted to kind of share his experience with the program itself and what he's done.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Oscar Tejo, and I have been part of the Trio program, Oprah Brown program for the past three years. Firstly, I want to emphasize, I cannot emphasize enough the amount of support I have received from Trio. As a first generation and low income student, it is really difficult for me to receive all the success, all the support I need to be successful. From weekly tutoring sessions to bi monthly Saturday academies, I received the support to not only excel in my advancement courses, but also do enrollment courses. Unfortunately enough, I have also been able to dedicate my past two summers to their summer program where I have taken college level courses through MJC and received currently nine credits. I know this will help me not only save money in the future, but it has helped me become a fall into the footsteps of a college student, which is what I want to do as I graduate high school. I also want to emphasize a sense of community and belonging. I joined Trio as a freshman, and it was really hard for me to readjust, especially coming back from the pandemic. However, they made Trio a very welcoming environment for me. All the advisors, the director George, my advisor Chelsea currently, they're very, very warm and close with me, and I really appreciate that. To shine light on the support they have given me, most recently, they helped me through writing essays and completing my applications for internships. I have actually been able to land an internship here at Kaiser in Modesto, and I've become a finalist for the the Lead of Scholars Program over in New Jersey. So these are some of the things I really appreciate Trio. Not only this, they help help me create lasting friendships, which I hold to this day. And I just really consider Trio to be one of my second homes. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and Oscar, actually, he has had brothers and sisters. Yeah, attend the program itself, so they've gone into to other great places as well. So the last piece I want to mention is the Rising Scholars Program, which is our previously incarcerated students and students that have been justice impacted. One of the new programs we actually started this spring was our juvenile justice program, where we're going out to the juvenile justice facilities to support our students. And same thing as Trio, they've had students go to different places. And so I wanted to bring up David, who chair his experience in in the program and the great things he's doing as well.
Welcome.
Thank you. While it's always with a bed of trepidation, right, that I have that I disclose that I was formerly incarcerated, I feel it's always important, right, to put a face, right, to kind of humanize this demographic of folks. I just for context sake, I was incarcerated at the age of fifteen, and I didn't come home until I was fifty one years old. In fact, it was at this two and a half here that I went away. So it's 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 a full circle moment for me. So anyway, I decided when I came home to to attend Modesto Junior College, I always desired a post secondary education, but I never had the opportunity because I was considered a life term inmate and not worthy to invest in. And so when I came home, that was my desire. And so I I went to Modesto Junior College and I went to general admissions and you know, I explained to folks there that I had just come home after thirty five years of incarceration and and I had disclosed some of the challenges that I thought might confront me, which was digital digital technology. And so the first thing they did was put me at pathways in front of a computer and after about forty five minutes, I I felt so ashamed, I just left. And I went back to welding. It was a tray that I picked up. And so a year later, I came back. I decided to come back and there was a counselor that was aware of this small program on campus called RSN, Rising Scholars Network, which is at fifty five community colleges today. And so that counselor walked me over to Glenn Stovall, and it changed my life completely. I graduated from Modesto Junior College. Next month, I graduate from UC Merced. And I'm glad to say that I'm going to graduate at the top two percent of my class. I wouldn't have had that experience, I I really don't believe, had it not been for RSN. And this is why, because RSN provided me an opportunity, an environment where I felt like I belonged, a place where I could acclimate to higher education and be around other folks that had gone to some similar experiences. And as a result of that, I realized that that I was able to thrive in this environment. And I was able to graduate with honors by the way at MJC. And so I never knew that I had that capacity within me. But it was as a result of just being supported in this environment that I really, I truly believe that's the reason why I was, I mean, I was able to excel at Modesto Junior College and now at UC Merced. And so, yeah, I'm just so grateful for these programs. And now I I work as a stifled employee at the Rise Up Center. And every day I hear from folks that are coming home from long sentences that just desire a post secondary education because they know that they can they can they can get a quality of life that they're looking for as a result of post secondary education. And I just know that it's 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 probably the most overlooked area when it comes to all these different efforts to reduce recidivism. We know from empirical studies, right, that you know, if a person achieves an AA degree, their their chances of recidivism reduces by thirty five percent. If they obtain a bachelor's degree, it's sixty percent. And if you you obtain a master's, it just doesn't exist. So we know higher education has the ability to transform people's lives. It's transformed my life. I see it every single day that it transformed people's lives. And so I just think that I I'm appreciative of the opportunity that I've been given at Modesto Junior College. And I'm also appreciative that other folks have been given some opportunity. And so I just want to thank you for hearing me out and for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to pass the baton to Matthew. But with these both gentlemen, actually, we were talking about grad school. And so I'm hoping that if they go for their masters or doctorate soon, then and maybe come back and teach a class or something. All right, thank you.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Perfect.
Breathe. It's been a been a meeting so far. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I want to talk to you a little bit about student success and support, student engagement. We have student success specialists and counselors counselors that form a success team. And those folks are very busy. You can see by the data on your slide, they have tons of contacts with our students. We have created student success hubs in each of our schools. Some of them are more advanced than others, but we're well on our way where students can actually stop off after taking class right where they're normally are in their school and possibly see a counselor or a specialist to help them succeed. Our campus life has been busy. As you might notice, there is a new PD in Penelope. They're home studying, or they would have been here tonight to greet you. We have brought on a new student ID card system. And that's really going to modernize the way we talk and the way we track student data. It'll allow students to scan in and may improve our check in at our different programs and services. We also continue to do the Flow Program, which is one of our greatest programs on this campus. We've almost provided seven thousand meals to students that are in need and hungry. We talked about campus partnerships and community partnerships. This is a group that I get to supervise. It's done an amazing job. A couple of things out of our first Subaru, Subaru U, that's hard to say fast, cohort, we there were two successful hires out of that, and we are looking at expanding that into more administrative roles with Subaru. And we're hoping to bring that out next semester, if we're lucky. Of great importance is our Inspire Youth, Inspire Dreams. We were so brave to bring five thousand eighth graders to campus. But what we did is we introduced them to the trades. So they could possibly look at that as a career versus a full four year degree. But what we did is we introduced them to the trades, so they could possibly look at that as a career versus a full four-year degree. We also did Touch a Truck, which was a great community service. We had two thousand folks that came and it was such a success with the chamber there, the chambers partnering with us. And we're hoping to add some scholarships to folks that might be interested in our CTE degrees. So another partnership based on what we heard a little bit earlier. Our Health Center, this might have been a little alarming to you when you look at those slides and see that eighty-five percent of the respondents had contemplated suicide. And the psychological stress on our students is keeping them from attending class and making it, making it to class. We have employed Timely Care, which is a twenty-four hour online counseling service. So you can see a licensed counselor whenever you need. And that's tremendous service coming from a community college. We also did our first wellness fair called Wellspring and we engaged thirteen other community partners in teaching our students how to live well. In addition to that, our health service group sits on ten Stan County committees and they chair one of them. And so I think that's just fantastic work coming out of that area. We have hired a mental health coordinator and two student advocates and hope to, hope to open our new wellness center and expand that next year. And last, we collaborated with our public safety group, Harry in particular, and Natalie Hassel, our mental health coordinator, to create the Blue Folder Project. What we found is people didn't know what to do, but this is now a guide to triage those students so we can bring the appropriate resources to make sure our students and our community is safe. Last but not least is our International Students Program. This has been a tremendous effort by one counselor, one part-time counselor, Emily Pack. She has done a fantastic job and as you can see, has increased our numbers every year. But it's because of our commitment to this population and the experience she provides folks that we've been so successful. I've asked one of our international students to come here and speak to you for a few minutes about his experience in our program. Omar, you want to come up, say a few words?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Omar and I am a part of the International Student Program here at Modesto Junior College. So I chose MJC because I heard it has a diverse international community and an amazing nursing program. And so far I've had a wonderful experience. And our student counselor Emily, she has made sure like we are well accommodated here. From hosting potlucks to having weekly drop in office hours. The International Student Program and their faculty has made being an international student a wonderful experience. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, just a few upcoming events. Our new student day is this Saturday. We are expecting over a thousand people on MJC campus. We have seven hundred and fifty students who are registered and two hundred parents and along with our volunteers will be there. So it'll be a lively campus on Saturday. We'll send you information regarding our Welcome Center opening. Our future projects, we're looking into two-way text messaging for our students for appointments. In lieu of appointments, for those who have a question or two that can quickly be answered, as well as a technology review and assessment of all the technology that we use in student services, what's working, what's not, and what we need to reconsider. I mean, also end of year summary and data report. So you'll get that at the end of the year to show everything that we've been doing in student services. Given you a lot of information today, but we hope you answer, answer a lot of your questions that you wanted.
This time I want to open up to the public, any questions? We all close the public comment, bring it back, any comments or questions from trustees?
Thank you for this. This is really great and it was great to see the counselors listed by school. That's wonderful. I'm really happy to see all this information.
Thank you. Other comments?
I was glad to see that we're getting more involved in the on, with us having the juvenile hall campus so close that we're taking advantage of that and working with what people have often considered our throwaways and they're definitely not. Look at David. I mean, a great example of a life turned around and we can do that so much more with so many more people. And I think it's just awesome that you guys are all taking a hand in that and running with it.
The Juvenile Justice Grant is, is giving us some more funds to do more in that area. So yes, absolutely will grow for twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five.
The packet is amazing. The presentations were fantastic. I want to thank everyone for making it personal. That's a lot of slides, but when you put a face and a voice, it has a meaning. So thank you for taking that approach. I also sent two emails during your presentation with ideas that you've planted. So thank you for that. I'm curious to hear about the success of your QR codes and the scan to make appointments. Has that seemed to work for you? I'm sure it's, it's still developing a baseline, but I'd love to hear how that tactic has played out thus far.
As our students are, you know, we're connected to these things now and our students have them. In fact, they are willing to spend more money to stay connected in this way. We do have some students that have greater need that, that's a challenge for to have those QR codes. But they've been very successful. And what's nice about it, it's in-time instant service, just like Kaiser or any of those other things. You can go scan. You can get the information to figure out when you can get to appointment. As Dr. Wilson has also said, we're looking at our programs like SARS that allow you to log into a hub and then see what counselors are available and make appointments in real time too. So all those little technology pieces are increasing, I think, our student service and satisfaction. Thank you for the question.
Any other questions?
Yes, I'm not sure how to address this too. Maybe, maybe Andrea. We've heard a lot of concerns around the FAFSA issues, the federal financial aid applications that students have to prepare. How have you helped students and particularly the high school students through that? Or where, where, where is that now? Are we, are we over the, the hump? Is it all working now or what's up?
Mine has been extended.
Yes.
We have been doing a variety of, thank goodness, we have a great financial aid director, Aurelia. But they've been doing a variety of FAFSA workshops to really help the students and their parents through it. And there definitely have been some hiccups, even with our Trio students and, and parents who are undocumented, but it's, it's definitely been a challenge. But the workshops that we've been doing to kind of help people through that process, delays that are happening are kind of out of our control, but we're just doing the best we can.
Well, I guess that anxiety level, you know, as deadlines approach and, and that's been extended at all. So those workshops are, are here? Are they out at the high schools? Are they different locations?
Oh, at the high schools, online and in person. And I think it might be in your Fall 2023 data report as well.
Okay.
Other questions? Vice President Wilson, I want to say on behalf of the board, we put a lot of pressure on you and your staff to increase enrollment. I mean, I think we talked about it all the time.
Understood, we understood the assignment.
And, and, and I'm just thrilled with what you've achieved. And as I said, I live in Turlock and I've heard from the principals of both high schools about your efforts. And I was fortunate enough to go to one of your events where you did that. Job well done and you need to be proud. So thank you. Okay, at this time we'll turn to association reports and we'll start off with President Marcus Wizanet. Didn't know you were first, did you? I switched the order, you know. You didn't bring any of those pastries or anything?
No, no, I didn't. You missed free cake. Free cake on Monday. It was, I know, free cake. There was all kinds of cake on Monday. Good evening trustees, President Richards and Chancellor Young. Just a couple of newsworthy notes from Columbia College today. Our, we're, as we're winding down our semester, we have some planning that's going on that, that we're going to roll into for next semester. But a big thing right now that we're starting to plan is we're going to plan our faculty retreat. And we always have that faculty retreat up at Baker Station. But the one thing that we want to do this year is we want to invite classified staff with us. We want to have classified and faculty up at Baker Station, doing some kind of team building and some workshops as well. So having the option of staying overnight, we always go down to Kitty Dee Meadows and have a big dinner down there as well. So it's really nice. And so just some team building with that as well. We're all looking forward to faculty graduation. We're all, the faculty is looking forward to graduating. Yeah, exactly. Sound like my dad. Yeah, so faculty, we're excited for graduation. And I don't know if you're familiar with Columbia College does, but we get to, accessing the CTE divisions, we get to wear our, we get to wear our hats. So culinary, we get to have, put our toques on. FNR has their, their helmets, you know. Fire Academy has their helmets as well. So it's pretty, that's, it's a cool thing that we always look forward to. And I'm personally, I can, since I'm up here, we're going to have a pretty good handful of graduates that we, from our program that we haven't seen in a long time. It's been, it's been a long time. And so the next couple of years, we're going to, looking out into graduating. It's going to be nice to see all those chef hats out there. A big thank you to Courtney. I want to go on public record to say a big thank you to Courtney and the graduation committee. We're looking forward to that. We're wrapping up hiring committees, child development, counseling and chemistry. So we're you know, good news that we did get to hire, you know, some, some people, right? So that's, that's, we're, we're working with that. And then a big thank you to Giselle, Aisha and both senates. We wrapped up the YCCD faculty hiring procedure and it was a document that we'd been working on for, how many years? Yeah, twenty years. So a long time. And we finally, both senates really have their eyes on it. We're really excited about the, about the outcome. And we're pretty excited that both senators are collaborating with each other. Okay, thank you.
Next, Modesto Junior College President, Giselle Flores.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. In this last stretch of our spring semester, faculty have done a lot this past month that I'm reporting on this evening. I'm excited to report that a hundred percent of program reviews were submitted for the first time ever, which deserves a huge shout out. I know, right? I was like, don't put me on the spot, I'm a president. So I was going to go, Brian. Really excited about that. Big shout out to our researchers who are incredible and got us the data that we needed in order to successfully complete those program reviews. We all felt like it deserved a big giant party. So one thing I've learned is never to complain about something because then people put you in charge of it. So I was part of the program review party planning committee. And I was really excited about the discussions that were happening. We had a lot of interdisciplinary discussions on how programs can create partnerships and how best practices can be replicated from one program to another to increase student success and retention. Now, to ensure that this was truly a party, we started with goat yoga with adorable participation from our ag programs, Baby Goats, Millie and Billy. We also took piñata breaks where we used Dr. Brennan's cane back there to hit piñatas in the shape of program review, program review documents created by Professor, Professor DJ Comey. If that isn't an example of collaboration, I don't know what is. faculty had a lot of pent-up aggressions we took out on that, piñata, let me tell you. We are also busy working on our local GE pathway and have a resolution coming through the Senate outlining a model requiring the course area specific to Title V legislation and including an additional three units titled the Empowered Individual in Society, which totals a twenty-four unit requirement for a local degree. This resolution was passed for our first reading and will be on the agenda for a special meeting on April twenty-fifth for a second reading. To conclude my report and after seeing that you all are on the list for approvals this evening for the National Conference on Race and Ethnicity in Higher Education in Hawaii, I wanted to let you all know that I will also be in attendance at this conference. And in order to receive training on how to further the equity work I do in governance and as a faculty rep on MJC's IDEAA Committee. I am pleased to see the investment being made to prioritize equity training for faculty, trustees, classified professionals and administrators alike, so that we can align our education, educational goals regarding equity at all levels of the district. I'm also looking forward to watching you all walking around in small groups of no more than three to avoid any possible Brown Act issues. I imagine that will take some intentional effort. In all seriousness though, I am looking forward to working cooperatively with you all next year on initiative, initiatives related to the training that we all receive. That concludes my report.
You will see all five of us at the presentation. That will not be a Brown Act violation.
As long as no business is discussed.
Exactly. Leadership Team Advisory.
You all went to that Brown Act training, right?
Several. Leadership Team Advisory Council, President Laura Mackey.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Members, President Richards and Chancellor Young. The leadership team is eagerly awaiting the conclusion of the hiring process for the Director of Cyber Security and the Vice Chancellor of IT. It's been a struggle with a lot of new hires in staff as well as in administration. And so it'll be nice to have some of those positions in place. Year-end graduation, year-end and graduation approaches. So many managers as well as their employees are working hard and doing extras where needed. And LTAC would like to thank everyone in advance for all the work that takes place, including facilities and media and all the volunteers that'll be there for our graduation and all those that work hard on our year-end. LTAC would also like to thank the district for paying for a much-needed accessibility audit at both colleges. This will be an eighteen to twenty-four month project with full ADA evaluations, findings and then prioritization from each college for any work that needs to be completed. MJC Nursing Program is moving forward with a vocational nursing program, the LVN Program. This will give more students a start on the journey of nursing and healthcare. The LVN Program will be working closely with the CNA Program and will start as an evening program providing more opportunity for local and working students. LTAC wanted to highlight some customer service at both colleges. There has been positive feedback from students about having a great experience visiting offices and other things across campus. The colleges are proud of the type of care that most visitors are receiving. We wanted to thank those that are involved with caring campus because that kind of initiated some of that, that progress. Finally, LTAC looks forward to seeing Board Members and the Chancellor at many of the award and scholarship events that are coming up this month. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Yosemite Faculty Association President, Brian Green.
Good evening trustees, President Richards and Chancellor Young. As I trust you have heard, our last negotiation session was a positive one that I hope has gotten us back on track to a timely conclusion to this round of negotiations. Substantial progress was made by both teams in recognizing the legitimate interests at the table, many of them shared. Meet again this Friday and I hope to continue the momentum and wrap up this round in the not-too-distant future. You may have heard that we recently discovered a mistake was made when publishing the current contract back in twenty-twenty-one whereby some of the approved updates weren't included in the finished publication. This is obviously unfortunate, but I don't see it as a huge deal. We are negotiating the language now again anyway, and I'm sure we can work through any disagreements that remain. Couple of other items I would like to cover. You may have also heard that we need to alter our pay periods for part-time and overload faculty to, to bring us into compliance with the ed code. This involves some complicated system changes. And we've been working closely with the district to have the new pay periods in place over the summer so that they can be tested prior to the fall term. I appreciate that this project is on track for a timely completion. Hard as, hard as it is to believe, graduation is right around the corner. This is one of the most inspiring times of the year for everyone at YCCD. I look forward to participating in all of the events over the next few weeks that celebrate our students' achievements. I also look forward to attending next week's tenure ceremony in MJC, which recognizes our hard-working faculty obtaining tenure. Finally, I would like to recognize the students that spoke earlier and echo the comments that many have made. I would also like to reiterate that YFA is working closely with the district to resolve the issues as quickly and expeditiously as possible and bring both faculty back on campus as soon as we can. This concludes my report. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Interim ASJC President, Matthew Rodriguez. I moved you up. I don't want you to have to be here all this time.
Hello, everyone. It's been a while since I saw you.
Very happy to have you here.
So am I. So a couple of things to report on. This semester has been a really active one with our student body government. During the semester, we had four Senator projects beyond the clouds where students were able to have vision boards to represent what their goals are, what their personality is. De-stress fest, students were able to paint over some stress balls that they had and get some de-stressing tactics over the midterms and semesters. Reflect on you, students were able to have little mirrors basically, and they were able to write on what positive things they like about themselves. And once they did that, they received a little notebook we had made. And it was really great to see students do that. An upcoming event we have is our last Senator project on April nineteenth. I'm going to try my best to pronounce this, Ian Mu... I'm gonna try my best to pronounce this, Ian Mu- Muudmark.
Good to see someone else has pronunciation issues.
But basically, this is an event where Middle Eastern culture is celebrated and it gives a chance for students to focus, not focus, but able to join in and see what other cultures are out there. And I'm excited to see how this goes. During the Semester of Flow, we have fed hundreds of students and it was great to see how many students were able to come up and get their vouchers. It was really great to see that. This year, we had our elections and, and we have had 14 students, candidates run for ASMJC and I am very happy to see them. Go for that. And I'm really excited to see how they went, they go. This, uh, this semester has been, oh, hold on. We also have an upcoming event, Campus Life Gala on April 24th, and where students are able to be rewarded. Students are able to be rewarded, some clubs as well and some other mentioned, uh, awards as well. Oops, sorry for that. Now, this is my last report as I am graduating for this semester, so.
Where are you going?
Uh, right now, I'm just gonna, uh, so I had, I did dual enrollment, so I've been doing school so from.
You've had enough.
Yeah.
Okay, take a break.
So I'm gonna take a break over the summer, but I'm still gonna think about that. But, um, I'm really grateful to have a team that has stuck out with me for this long and I've been doing this for almost three years. So it was been great doing this. Uh, I, I would like to have my thanks for Allen for helping me out with ASMJC and Student Works as well. And it's been my honor to serve as the Director of Political Development and interim president of ASMJC for three years, and I have learned so much and I cannot thank my team and advisors for teaching me and be able to be a leader and have served my student body. It also been my honor to work with everyone else beside me, like Giselle, Brian and Andrea as well. And once again, I'd like to thank everyone who I've worked with and allowed me to learn, to learn and experience everything. Thank you, ASMJC, for the memories and experience that we'll never forget.
Thank you and good luck to whatever you do. Okay, now we have the Classified Senate reports, starting off with Columbia College Classified Senate President Sandra Smith.
No report. No report.
No report? Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Modesto Junior College Classified Senate President Amanda Cannon. No report, okay? Now we'll turn to, we already did once, Matthew Rodriguez is Alexander jokes here? No? Okay, no report. We're making up time, folks. We'd rather have them here, though. Uh, California Public Association CFA President Patrick Krebs. He's here, very good.
Good evening, President Richards, fellow trustees and Chancellor Young. First and foremost, classified professionals at both colleges are in full swing preparing for the graduation ceremonies in just a few short weeks. We look forward to seeing all our graduates and their families on this special day every year. It is why we are here. On behalf of CSEA Chapter 420, I would like to congratulate the 2024 graduates and wish them the best on all their future endeavors. To each student, please know that classified professionals are proud of you. Well, I trust.
I think you got it in right before he left, so that's. I think you made it.
Negotiations with the district are off to a positive start. We've had two meetings so far and they've been productive. Although CSEA leadership was disappointed with the lack of progress in implementing the shared goals that were established in discussions last year under Article 22, professional growth and educational opportunities. The district had shared at their first meeting last month that they had made no progress on implementing. I am relieved to share that the district has begun making progress by our second negotiation meeting. CSEA leadership is hopeful these changes can be implemented and negotiations for this article finalized as soon as possible, since these discussions began this time last year. CSEA leadership is also relieved to report that the Benefits Committee is finally established and a meeting is scheduled. CSEA has concerns and issues that some of our members are reporting to us about some of the providers that the district uses. CSEA leadership is hopeful that the committee will be able to work together to resolve these third party service-related issues and concerns. This concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Very much.
Thank you.
Back to liaison to the board, Professor McKissick.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. I will begin with recognition and commendation for an MJC academic program that happens to be based in my own Department of Communication Studies. Our forensic speech competition team recently returned from the FiRopai Community College National Tournament. Teams from all over the country competed. Ours did quite well, bringing home six bronze medals, a silver medal and a gold. One of our students, Eve Daldo, won the Warren Dalen Fellowship Award as voted by fellow competitors. I will mention again, in 2022, MJC won the Sylvia D. Mariner Cumulative Sweepstakes Award, the highest honor in forensics competition that can be awarded to a community college. The program is in its 102nd year and has never failed to reflect well on MJC and the district. Uh, some of those competitors will be graduating and with scholarships based on their success. I'm looking forward to see them at the MJC graduation ceremony. Commendations to President Sanders and the other leaders who are organizing another outstanding ceremony. Their outreach to faculty and students to encourage attendance has been excellence. Since I last spoke to you, I have attended the Board Policy Committee. The philosophy of transparency, engagement and collegiality, as always, was first and foremost. Also, I have conferred with our chancellor and most members of the board. Now, such conversations are invaluable for the performance of my duties and a highlight of my semester. Thank you again for the goodwill and responsiveness when I spoke to you about faculty association concerns. A topic in recent conversations is our district's plan to participate in the National Conference on Race and Equity in Education at the end of next month. President, uh, MJC Academic Senate President Giselle Flores referenced that. This is an important opportunity. I appreciate the board's commitment to make the best use of this opportunity. As plans progress, I am confident that our chancellor and board will seek the input of faculty associations and consult collegially on the issues to be ironed out. I've definitely seen some of that recently. Again, thank you for this opportunity to address you. And that concludes my remarks.
Oh, my goodness. Well done. That's your quickest ever. Well done. Moving on, Chancellor Young.
Thank you, Dr. Richards. To continue on my report, I'd like to call on Vice Chancellor Stewart to give an update on transportation.
I wanted to keep this brief, but also let you know what we've been doing over the last year plus as it relates to transportation. And I won't read all of these, but really what started our idea of looking at transportation was coming back from COVID and the overall decline of students that use our transportation services. Because online classes are up, we have seen that there are less students actually physically on campus. Also during this time, as we came out of COVID, we have worked for free parking for students, which I know for some of our local communities means that we've had less complaints about students parking in their community. Instead, they're parking on our campus. We also have free transportation, uh, available to students at both colleges. So that is both with, uh, Bualami County, Calaveras County, and then with the Stan RTA in this area. So we've had this conversation going on at administrative level for probably closer to two years. But we intentionally spent the 2324 academic year having Columbia, or excuse me, having MJC having college-wide discussions. These are conversations that occurred at College Council, conversations that directly went to the associated students with Andrea and Sarah Schrader to make sure that people understood why we were having this conversation, because of lack of ridership, because of the other services that we now provide. We now have the MJC Vice President of Student Services serving on the board of the Stan RTA. We also have our Transportation Supervisor, who has been working with Stan RTA as it relates to their bus stops. Can we get them onto our campus instead of out on the street? And we work with them on adjusting our routes to make it more convenient for students. A lot of conversation has gone on, not only on the campus, but outside of the campus. Now, as we've gotten to this point, we've also started to have our conversations with CSEA on how this might impact employees. These meetings are continuing and hopefully in the next several months, we will come to resolution as it relates to how this might impact CSEA. Transportation is, is an interesting position to fill as it relates to full-time bus drivers, as it relates to mechanics. And we have a few vacancies and so that also played into the idea of could we do something different? And that has been part of our thought process. So we currently have two bus drivers, one a nine-month and one a 10-month position. As we consider transportation, we also have to look at the cost of maintaining service. And I broke this out into our shuttle fleet and our charter fleet. And many of our vehicles are older with a significant number of miles. There are required changes to our equipment that are coming our way. And to maintain a fleet of up-to-date equipment, we're looking at 1.1 million for our shuttle fleet and 1.3 million if we were to replace all those charter buses. And I did want to share with you the shuttle ridership. And this was 2006 through spring of 23. We have looked at the current data and the numbers do continue to struggle. They're even, uh, they're probably at about the same level as, as fall '22 and, and spring of '23. And we've also, as we introduced the SAN RTA project where we are contracting with them, where students do have free transportation. Although these numbers are small, what I wanted to highlight is that each month you can see that on average, 10,000 students were utilizing the service. Whereas we look at the prior page during the entire semester, approximately 7,500 were using over an entire semester and yet 10,000 students are using it every single month. And again, those are 2023 numbers. So I just wanted to share a little history of, of, of where we started, um, what we've had conversation on and where we are now as it works with CSEA and having this conversation with them.
So when I tell people that no decisions have been made and everybody's being consulted, you've proven that tonight.
Correct. It is still an ongoing conversation.
Do you have any idea when you're hoping to make a decision as to what's going to be done?
I think it's important that we work these conversations through a CSEA. I'm hoping we can do those conversations over the next month or two so that the college can be prepared for communicating with students as it relates to what may be going on with the shuttle for the fall semester.
Dr. Wilson, you're very involved in this, so students are gonna, you're gonna make sure students get what they need? Professor McKissick, you believe faculty is being included so that decisions can be made?
Yes, thank you for asking. Um, I want to commend the speakers you're hearing on this and their efforts to encourage the conversation. I hope that continues. I also want to thank President Sanders. He's made a commitment that programs that need that con, that transportation, an example, our competition teams, the team I talked about earlier, the forensic speech team will be held harmless as we go through and make changes. I'm, I'm hearing the plan to bring in the regional rapid transit district. A great idea. I think we need to be careful and not just assume that that'll fill the need. The students using the shuttle between campuses also need to be held harmless. And if there's not a whole lot of them, of course, that is beside the point. So, uh, I do appreciate the ongoing, uh, conversations and I appreciate the commitments that have been made, for instance, by the board. By you and by the President of MJC. So thank you.
While we have you here, Senate Presidents, Brian Green, you're all included. You, you're getting information. Brian?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so most of the concerns.
He wants in the minutes and on TV.
Most of the concerns that I've heard to, to echo Professor McKissick are related to the competition teams and, and I appreciate that we're able to share with them and we have shared with them that they should expect to be held harmless. So, um, I, I think that's allayed most of the concerns. Um, I, since we've shared that, I haven't heard new concerns.
Well, in my last life, I was a college athletic director and I'll get with you, just wait. As a, as a college athletic director, I've been involved in this multiple discussion and three or four different campuses. And I know it, I know the biggest thing is that you have to have that transparency and Trevor, thank you so much for getting this out there. There's, when you look at these prices, you know, it's a good time because it seems like employees won't be infected. There's an opportunity. I know, uh, just particularly with the athletic teams, you know, we had a situation where, uh, we, we had buses, we, we stopped having buses, our purchasing people went out, they, they made agreements with very good companies. Then faculty or whatever could call a bus company and they didn't have to go get bids because it was already done. And so I think we're in the right direction. Dusty Hinton.
Question, what was the colored lines through the bus routes? Okay. Right, because okay, because I know that, um, Bus 25, which was one of those, I've had people calling me and asking me if there's not some way that there can be, um, a direct route because they get let off over the bridge and, um, to walk over here uh, is very difficult for some of them. They try and get on the move van and that's really difficult to get on to right now, um, the dial-a-ride. And sometimes it takes a few weeks to even get an appointment to get approved for it. So if there's some way that we can make just a loop through and then back out Beckwith, um, it would be, it would be, I think it would bring in some more students.
Other questions? The last thing I would tell you is that we have relationships with county supervisors, county executives, the whole deal. If you need help, come to us. Don't be afraid to ask. Okay, so no meeting would be complete without me missing something. So I'm gonna go back to 5.3 presentation on accreditation updates from Columbia College and Modesto Junior College. I'm so sorry. And I'm gonna blame it on the chancellor because when he moved up that other accreditation, I didn't realize it was you. So Henry, it's really your fault.
And I don't see Patrick here tonight, so I don't know if you're gonna give that thing. Okay. So, um, at this point, uh, we've had, each college has had, um, kind of a meet and greet through Zoom with all of our team members. Um, and that was really nice to kind of talk through that. There was open forum and then there was, um, the administration met with them as well as the, uh, the tri-chairs for Columbia. And the team has met, reviewed our ICER and they first of all asked for additional evidence, which we provided. Thank you, Graciela and Kimberly for, for giving me some district information. Um, and then recently, as of last night, we received our, um, core inquiries and that we had four. Um, the first one was involved around student engagement. Second one about, um, learning achievement, how is that discussion on campus happening and how are we discussing student equity gaps? Um, and then how is the college impacted with the new RAM, the new resource allocation? resource allocation model that the district has been working with? And the final one is around our distance education procedures and courses. And so we will be scheduling an open forum for our college on April 26, which is a Friday, hoping to get feedback from the college community on these four inquiries. And then the team will be visiting us in the fall sometime during September 16.
Any questions from anybody from the public? Bring it back. That's in Sanders.
In a similar vein, Modesto Junior College had the forums. We have received our core inquiries. Generally, the team was very, very pleased with what they saw and they gave great compliments to all the responsiveness of our ALO, Patrick Bettencourt and the team. We have two core inquiries that they're looking into further. One of them is on a follow-up, is essentially a trust-but-verify moment, where in our strategic plan and our educational master plan, we said we would be reporting to the Board of Trustees in particular on student success metrics and equity gaps and the work that we're doing there. And we haven't done that yet because it hasn't become time for that yet. So that's on the agenda for August and we'll all be talking to you about it at that time. And we'll have met that checkmark and followed up on it and that should be done. The other issue that they're looking at is also with distance education. And they're looking at a sample of classes and and doing some quality control and making sure that we have sufficient regular and substantive interaction with our students. So we're looking into that and we're going to get responsive answers to them.
Well, this is going really well and you to be commended. If you need any board assistance, I nominate trustee Beggs. She's she's the best at this stuff, but I know the final thing comes to us, but feel free to include us. Any other questions from the board? Thank you. All right, now we'll go back to the chancellor, who it's his fault we got off schedule.
Thank you. Thank you. College reports, Dr. Lena Tran is out of town. So to give the college report is Dr. Melissa Rebby.
I knew I should have just stayed. So, you know, this time of year is really busy. We've had a lot of great activities. We had a very successful job fair. The entire Oak Pavilion was completed, completely full with employers and student, potential students, potential employers, employees walking around, and so it was very successful. We've had some really great health and wellness events that we've put on, including things that are very serious in nature, suicide prevention interventions. So we have all of our student ambassadors and all of our student workers go through that training annually. And so it's a really successful event. Unfortunately, we had to cancel our film with the science because of snow. So, you know, what a difference a week makes, right? Last week, we were closing campus because of snow. And this week, it was almost 90 degrees outside today. So we've got a lot of things. We've had several people say, you know, commencement is coming up. But nobody said it is in 23 days, so 23 days away. We also have our scholarship ceremony on the 18th, starting at 5:00 PM. You are all welcome to attend. We would love to see you. We've been doing a lot in terms of outreach, financial aid workshops. We've, this is the time of year where we're out in the high schools. We're doing our financial aid nights. We do them in person. We do them via Zoom every single week. As we know, there's been issues. Our financial aid staff has been really wonderful, helping families get through that process. We also have a program called the Welcome Home Students where we support students in need for our housing. And so we pay for their housing for the year and they're, and they get additional support. They get a dedicated counselor. They get, they have meeting, weekly meetings, group meetings, networking, and just regular support. And so they they're going out this week for a very night, a dinner and fun. And they're celebrating their first student that's been through the Welcome Home Program for the last two years, who is graduating and transferring to UC or CSU Chico next month. So the other thing that we're really working on is, as you probably know, we've had a very difficult time after Lorraine Campana, our college nurse, retired, filling that position. We had three, three failed searches. We actually hired somebody. They worked one day and then had family issues and had to leave. So we've been working really dedicatedly with the county to provide those services. And so now we have a commitment for their health band to be on campus once a month to provide all of the services that a nurse that would generally provide. So we're really trying hard to continue with services for our students in that realm. Students are, they're, they're doing their annual cram night. We, you know, they get donuts, stress, stress-free donuts, lots of updates, lots of fun stuff. They just did an activity called Duck Duck Goose, which we did extend because the deadline was Friday when the college was closed due to snow. So lots of activities, lots of fun. I already talked about accreditation. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Sanders?
Well, good evening. You've heard from our fantastic student services team. I'm just sitting here beaming with pride in all the great work that they have done in response to helping our students. And tonight, I hope you've received invitations to all of the upcoming events. We've got all the celebrations for graduation in session. We're trying to get all of those to you. I wanted to focus tonight's report on a little different goal. One of our goals is to have as many young people on our campus as possible, high school age, junior high age, future students. And there's, from all walks of life, from all areas of our community. And we're doing that very deliberately. The students who come on campus then can see themselves as college students, can visualize themselves as successful, as maybe this is their place and their place to fit in. And you heard a couple of students talking about fitting in, finding their spot. And so I started, Judy's been helping me collect some numbers. And I, my report started out today with a big number and it's more than doubled just sitting here. So I'm just going to read you some numbers. Showdown in Motown occurred on Saturday in the pavilion over here. I walked in and never seen the place as full as it was. Yes, there was 450 people there, but there was also 1,700 animals, pigs and goats and sheep, all being shown, mostly with the 405 future students. Latinx Comic Arts Festival had 1,500 participants. History Day in February had 125. Science Olympiad had 850. The Science Bowl had over 100. Central Valley Invention Convention was 50. In Maps last Friday, we had 450 young families here for the Science with the Science Wizard Night. We had a dance day last fall with 400 students. Last week, Legally Blonde, which was a fantastic show, if you didn't get to see it, 900 students showed up on buses to go visit that and be as part of MJC Theater. Same thing in the fall in Puffs. We had 1,300 students come in for that. Jam and Jive, dance competition with 600 participants. Fall Sing was 500 students from our community coming to sing together. The National Music Educators Concert last January was 750 students. Egg Field Day, which happened in the middle of March, was 1,525 students. MJC Experience Day is the, and Helica talked about, is 2,000 students. African-American Education Conference, roughly 200 students were at that. And back in the fall, our Hispanic Education Conference had 800 students showing up on buses and having these incredible times. College, add those all up and we're looking at 18,500 students having visited Modesto Junior College this year to experience something and be a part of something. And those are our future students and we're really happy to have them here.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm delighted to announce we have a winner for the Classified Employee of the Year Award. The colleges have been asked to nominate a classified person. And this has gone on for, what, a couple of months? We have a name and selection has been made. So this evening, it is my pleasure to announce Mary Calderon as the 2024 YCCD Classified Employee of the Year. I am proud to announce that Mary has served this district for 35 years, serving students and helping them be successful in their goals. Mary is an instructional support assistant in the Instructional Learning Center, which serves many English second language students and also assisted staff to work with the students to help them gain a new language and succeed in this country. Very, very important work. So Mary, thank you again for the work that you have done for 35 years. So this evening, it is my pleasure to present you an award. So I'm going to come down and present you the award. Graciela is going to take a picture. And I know your family is here, so I want to take this opportunity to invite your family to come forward and be included in the picture. Let this be a moment to be treasured from tonight, henceforth forward, right?
Chancellor Young, can I add a, add just a note to that? I've worked closely with Mary for my whole career. She's been an example to me on how to relate to students. And her office, she was working right across from my office when I was a young faculty member. And she's just always been fantastic. We we know this caring campus initiative that we brought on campus. She could lead the caring campus initiative. She's just a wonderful person and the award could not go to a better candidate. Fantastic.
Well, it's been a pleasure. I'm working here for 35 years. It's kind of my home away from home. Okay, I love my students. I, and I especially, especially want to thank Ruth Lumen and Jillian Daly for guidance and support. And my EL, and also my ELW students for trusting me because they're, you know, they're here from a new country and they hear all kinds of things. So it's awesome that they trust me and they allow me to help them achieve their educational goals. Okay, thank you all.
Right? I have a form here that the president of the board will sign and submit to the state chancellor's office. So again, thank you. Last but not least, I want to announce that we are going to recognize the Classified School Employee Week that is coming up. And as in the past, the district will recognize the contribution of classified employee during the third week of May. But we want to get the notice out now so that you know that it is coming. That concludes my report. Thank you.
5.6 is just the travel report for your edification. Moving on to the consent agenda, Graciela, one was added. Do we need to talk about that or just it's on there?
It was added to the board's packet once it was printed, but it it was as it stands for the public.
Anybody from the public want to pull anything from consent? Seeing none? Any trustees want?
I'll make a motion to approve items 6.2 to 6.11.
Motion by trustee Garrett?
If I may, just make note that there was a, an update or revised page to item 6.9, the salary schedules, specifically the classified salary schedule. Range 39 was, was an error. And so it's highlighted on a sheet that was left at the dais.
Yeah, you provided that.
And with that, I'll still make a motion to approve those items.
And I see trustee Hinton Saskins. Okay, very good.
And before we take a vote, as customary, I'd like to recognize first Kelly Addington, Administrative Technician, Instruction Office, Modesto Junior College, 17 years of service. You know, we've heard great things tonight about about our support staff and and the instruction office. And I can only imagine the impact that that Kelly's had on 17 years of service to Modesto Junior College, our community and our students. And I, and wish them well in in retirement. Robert Taylor, 22 years of service, custodian, facilities planning and maintenance and transportation. Central Services, MJC, 22 years of service. I've said this before, our custodians really stepped up to the plate during during COVID. We could have not stayed open without them. And and we could not have provided a safe environment for our staff and our students if it wasn't for our, our classified professionals in the rank of custodian. So I wish Robert all the best in his retirement and thank him for his years of service. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, pass. Okay, now we've got some, we're on to item seven, unless I forgot something else. And that would be a second reading on board policy.
Good evening, trustees. President Richards, Chancellor Young. Before you are 11 policies which are up for a second reading and board approval. The Board Policy Committee is recommending that the board pool policy 2410 and approve the remaining 10 policies as presented in the agenda. Policy 2410 will be brought back for a second reading at the May 8th board meeting. If there are any questions over these 10 policies or the one that is being pulled, I can answer them prior to the board's discussion and action.
Need a motion to approve?
Move to approve the submitted board policies with the omission of 2410.
I'll second it and-
Some comment, trustee?
Yeah, we just, we've worked through these and we've had people help from the some that have come to the meetings and we understand we need to change our time. We're working on that. But I would just ask the committee to accept our hard work and go with our recommendation.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Passes. And we have a first reading.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Before you are 11 policies which are up for a first reading. The Board Policy Committee is recommending that the board conduct the first reading on only policies 3530, 3-80, 32, 4,36250 as presented in the agenda. The Board Policy Committee is recommending that the remaining seven policies, 3,500, 3,501, 3,505, 3,510, 3,515, 3,520 and 7,600 be pulled for further review and feedback from the subject matter area experts. These seven policies will return to the board as a first reading in the fall. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those as well as we have. Was Harry here? We do have our campus safety available if there is any questions on the campus safety related.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none. Board, any questions? Motion to approve?
We don't.
Oh, we don't, no.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, next is 7.3 and it's a designation of May 19th through the 25th as Classified School Employee. Any discussion? Motion to approve? Second? Wesley, you haven't done any. I gotta give. Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Okay, moving on to board comments, 8.1. Anybody with any future agenda items? Looking to the lefts. Okay. Comments from the board of trustees?
Yes, I just wanted to mention to Brian Green, thank you for the invitation to participate in the YFA meeting and I was accommodated. I was out of town, but I was able to participate via Zoom. They were very cordial. We had a good discussion and I appreciated that opportunity. They were very cordial. We had a good discussion and I appreciated that opportunity.
Trustee Garrett?
If I may, just have a few extra moments and I promise to be brief.
You can have as much as you want.
Okay. So I've stated many times in the-
Have a gun, I know.
That how important community college professors, instructors are to a student's life and how they can have a deep and lasting impact. As I sit up here on this dais, I can honestly say that there's only a couple of people in my life that have had a huge impact on my life as a struggling student, my life as a law enforcement professional, and my life now is representing the community on this board. And that was Rich Rhodes. Some of you probably know Rich. He was an instructor of criminal justice here for approximately 30 years. He was a founding member of the Regional Criminal Justice Training Center. To say that he had an impact on, on law enforcement professionals in the region, the state of California and nationally. Many of his students, including myself, went on to achieve command rank in various law enforcement agencies throughout the state, the region. He also had an impact on mentoring students that went on into the federal service. In fact, one of his students that he took under his wing was the, not interrogator per se, but the chief investigator because this individual spoke Arabic. And when it came time to interview Osama bin Laden, he was the chief FBI agent assigned to that task.
George Piro, Charlaq Sun.
Yep. So Rich had a huge impact. He, for me, he took the time to break me out of my shell. I learned how to be a public speaker because of him. He took countless students down to the Los Angeles Police Department where many of them excelled and again achieved command rank. And I bring all this up just because how important it is that we recognize our community college instructors, professors. I'd be amiss to say that he was also 20 years as a reserve deputy sheriff for Stanislaus County where he and I worked side by side. I recently learned, I'd kind of lost touch with Rich. We were friends for a long time. He passed away last year. So it saddens me to say that, but I'm here to celebrate his life, his accomplishments and his service to the community, to our students and to law enforcement professionals. So thank you for the extra time.
I said you have a gun. Trustee Bakes? What? I see your mic on. I don't see Nancy's mic on. Do you have something?
This one. Sorry.
It's all right.
Well, I was just going to say that I took my seven-year-old granddaughter to the Latinx Comic Arts Festival. Latinx, I never know how to pronounce that. But anyway, we went and she had a wonderful time. She was so excited and she's still talking about it. So it was packed. And I learned that there's this whole other area of comic books that I know nothing about, but it was, it was really great. So I just wanted to mention that. And of course, I have all the usual meetings and policy procedures and all of that, but that was the thing I did that was out of the ordinary and I really enjoyed it.
Very good. So 8:20, we're adjourned. What did I miss? No, she didn't have anything.
The next meeting?
The next meeting is... What is it? May?
The next meeting is... May 8th at Columbia College.
Thank you.